Let's start with one. Is that?
Good evening and welcome to our school board work session this evening. We're going to begin our meeting with the SPS Vision 2020 presentation by our superintendent, Dr. John B. Gordon III. Dr. Gordon.
Thank you, Dr. Buck. I'm gonna take the time to move down to the podium to address the board properly.
Okay, what did I do?
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. As become custom here in the two years and eight months now that I've been here, I always try to make sure that I give the board an opportunity to see the plan and the vision that we have for the upcoming school year. And traditionally, I've done this in the month of June so that the entire board knows what we are planning for the summer as well as for the twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. So there are four main agenda item points that I want to be able to discuss today. The first one is a huge initiative that we're gonna do division-wide called Community Leadership. As usual, we also want to alert the board and our school community about our instructional plan for next year, including basically a repeat of what we've done with summer series in the past, our transition for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year to the four-by-four block schedule, and our professional learning plan for next year. We've also had discussion, I know it's been a hot topic, especially with the national and state teacher shortage. So I did want to spend some time talking about human resources and talent acquisition, some of the outstanding work from both Dr. Brown and Ms. Avery in that area, and from the work that both Mr. Napier, Ms. Forghman, and Mr. Littlefield have done, similar to what I did last year with the SPS facilities and maintenance overview. The first item I'm really excited about, and really this kind of stemmed from our SPS Zoo event when it came to community leadership, and the great positive feedback that I know that you all received as board members, as well as what we received as staff, when we had about five thousand family members, staff members, where SPS actually took over the zoo. We were thinking about ways to officially bring some uniformity to some of the community partnerships that we have, as well as businesses and individuals that would like to formally support Suffolk Public Schools. As you can see here, there are three fields of focus. The first one is SPS supports. As we wanted to make sure that we had a support plan in place to not only support our students that we do every day, but also our community members, specifically our parents. The parental partnership program, we are going to eliminate the myth that you've seen in several places where parents have been against school divisions, there's been a divide there. In some places, we want to ensure that that does not happen here in Suffolk Public Schools. And our SPS Community Champions, which is more about businesses that officially and formally support Suffolk Public Schools and will become our official business partners. The first one is SPS supports, and the first thing that we did was we actually, coming out of CAC and some conversations that I have had with some of our special education parents, we developed a spare parental support group, and this is basically like a group that actually was gonna allow parents to learn from each other. And we had our first pilot meeting in April, you know, we had a few parents in attendance there. Our CAC president Saul Gardines was one of our main speakers, and this is a great way for parents to be able to not only learn about the IP process, but to learn from each other exactly what to spec from case managers, communication, and tips. This was something that we thought was necessary because one of the things that really kind of hit me pretty hard was, special education parents have said several times that you don't really understand what it is to be a special education parent, unless you are a special education parent. And this is something that we wanted to be able to focus on multiple times a year, where they can share ideas, share resources, share supports. And our entire special education department was present, along with Dr. Branch and myself, Stephen Edwards, our data and research analysis coordinator was also there, trying to really to get parents to understand the importance of testing with our entire goal of making sure that not only will we be able to graduate with our special education students on time, but also to prepare them for life after SPS. Transition teams is a focus and information on our transition grades, and we're talking about starting school. We're talking about fifth to sixth grade, we're talking about eighth to ninth grade, and graduating SPS. And as we look at cohort data, I mean, you all know we've had two years where our students really haven't had a normal school year. And even this year with us coming back face-to-face for five days, there are still adjustments that had to be made because of quarantine and students losing time and teachers losing time in the classroom. And so we want to make sure as we're beginning to really follow those cohorts as they matriculate through our school division, that we set up some supports for them, and that I've asked Dr. Branch's team to kind of lead this effort, along with working with Dr. Byrd and the school leadership team, trying to make sure that we're putting proper supports in place while also being able to share some of these information with our parents. Specifically, when it comes to year thirteen, which we really want to have parent supports in place for senior parents. You didn't understand that applications for college usually do between December and January, that probably one of the last SATs you'll be able to take would be October or December. I mean, different things so that you understand if you're going into the workforce, when you should really start to focusing on your internships, when we are bringing in our military recruiters, when that process occurs. We feel that it's necessary to also to help educate our parents who sometimes may have questions, and they depend on some other, you know, areas to get that information. Everything that I'm talking about with you all in the community leadership program, we're gonna have a digital handbook ready, as well as information will be placed on our website. We also want to talk about communication protocols for support. Thank you to all of you, all of the board members that follow our norms and protocols, and when you get parental concerns or student concerns, that you forward them to the proper staff, that you forward them to me. But we also want to be able to help our parents understand that there is a process and a chain of command when it comes to communication. If, for example, you're having a concern with a teacher, the proper protocol would be to email that teacher, but also to CC the principal. A lot of times, sometimes some of our constituents want to skip those steps, and then what we end up doing is going back and talking to the teacher and the principal anyway. So we want to be able to give specific examples on if you're having a concern. If you're having a concern with the administrator, then you would email Catherine P. Shawn and Dr. Lee and CC Dr. Byrd. If there's a concern that's happening where things continue to escalate up the ladder, and it gets to the school board or it gets to me, those are some of the examples that we're also going to be able to provide. And we're gonna actually list duties and responsibilities depending on the field of concern or questions that you may have, because not everything that we get communication about is a concern. A lot of it is also just general questions. As Ms. Ward is revising our website, we want to make sure that that information is easy to find. We also want to talk about proactive parents. This kind of comes as a piggyback on Dr. Brown and Mr. Boone's presentation on discipline. This also comes from some of the things that Cynthia Devers and Dr. King have spoken about when it comes to our social, emotional learning and some of our behavioral supports. We are going to give academic tips and behavioral strategies to our families. We're gonna give them tips, things that sometimes we assume, like elementary parents reading to their kids every night. Like making sure that the parents are gonna be involved when it comes to PTA, booster clubs, coming to events, chorus concerts, finding ways to build relationships with the teachers and the schools. I mean, those are some of the things that we're gonna look for as we can try to continue to be proactive to get our discipline numbers down. You all saw from the data that discipline was down across the division. You all saw that. We want to be able to make even greater adjustments and have even larger declines next year, as well as making sure that parents understand about some of the additional supports we're gonna put in place, and some supports that we're gonna continue, like Saturday Academy, for example. To go into a little bit more detail, the parental partnership program, this is also gonna include a calendar of traditional events per level. You guys have gotten the emails about fall festivals, you've gotten the emails about chorus concerts. It will have athletic schedules on there, but it will also give opportunities for parents to be able to volunteer and work with the schools. And I gave a couple of categories here, such as coaching, volunteering, PTA, booster clubs. These are gonna be opportunities that we're gonna try to get our parents back involved, as long as our health data allows us to do so. As well as our business and financial support, and we'll talk about this a little bit more a little later on for our SPS Community Champions. But what we are understanding and what we've kind of figured out is that we have a lot of companies and businesses in the city of Suffolk that have supported our schools, that have supported individual programs and different activities, supported classrooms, but there wasn't a uniform documentation or paper process to do that. So we're asking for our community engagement team with the help of Mr. Skinner in the CTE department to be able to put this together with some guidelines that are actually being set up by Ms. Forghman. The Community Champions, this is what I was referring to when I said tiered levels of community support from individuals and businesses. And what we're gonna do is we're gonna create a Community Champions catalog, right? A catalog that will have a list of specific community and financial partners. And the good thing about this and the incentive for the businesses is, we are then gonna ask our twenty-three hundred and twenty-five employees, if you need to get your teeth clean, go to this dentist. This is a person that we have here that's gonna be a community sponsor for us. You need to get your car fixed, go to this mechanic, this auto shop, you need to buy a car, go here. These are the things that we're gonna look for, and some of the things that we're gonna put into the letter as we're working on this process, is about some additional perks, you know, passes to game, advertisements and programs. And we're gonna have different levels of support. Right now, we're looking at blue, bronze, silver, and gold. You know, I wanted to make sure that we kept the blue in for SPS colors. But we're also gonna ask the businesses to give our kids internships. One of the things you all have seen consistently to pop up is when Mr. Skinner is here presenting to the board every year is our hundred percent workforce readiness rates, right? But kids have also lost hands-on experiences because of COVID. So let's have a list of businesses that are already lined up, that kind of match up with the fields that we're offering at CCAP, or for some of our other kids that want to do it because of Project Lead the Way. We also want to make sure to be partner and mentor with our faith leadership. And I've had some conversations with the Suffolk Interdenominational Ministerial Alliance. They have done a really good job when we first had COVID hit of tutoring our kids. We want to be able to continue that program, but we also want to make sure that we kind of are able to share with them some resources, so it's not just the people, there's also some consistency of what's being shared. We feel with this big community leadership and the Community Champions Plan that we will have consistency throughout the city and one uniform message on supporting our kids. It's gonna be outreach, it's gonna be tutoring. One of the things that Mr. Riddick had actually spoke about when we had our discipline presentation, and we've actually talked about it in a couple of meetings prior to that, was outreach. We believe in using our faith leaders, we believe in having some organization. We're hoping that's gonna be another strategy that's gonna be used to really help to squash some of the violence that we're seeing in our community. For our instructional planning, this is just a recap of what we did last year. This was extremely successful. Dr. Branch, Dr. Lawson-Devonport, the entire TNL team put this together. Our summer academy, just as a reminder, that's for those kids that need the SOL remediation, right? Where we remediate them intensively for weeks before they actually take the test again. Our summer school model that we had, and you can see some of the pictures that we had up there, working on those power skills. And we also wanted to make sure that we can continue with the summer bridge program for those kids to get enrichment activities. This is a lot for our accelerated folks. Again, we're really working on transition grades as well as transition subjects. And Summer Explorer, which was led by Katrina Carey, our social studies supervisor last year, where we had geo-tagging, really identifying a lot of the historical areas around Suffolk. And parents and students, community members were sending in pictures that Ms. Ward and the team put on the website, really highlighting the city of Suffolk. And we wanted to make sure that not only was it pictures, but we had incentives and rewards running along with it, and kids were writing reports on some new information that they'd learned, which also could be shared in class once school starts back up. So we're really not doing a lot of adjustments or changes from the summer series last year because that was so successful. And part of the reason why we really put this, the Summer Explorer program in there is because we really want to encourage kids to get out, right? It was, we all know it was a challenge when they were sitting behind the computers for long periods of time when all of us were virtual, but we still want to be able to kind of focus on that, especially since we tried to model it with our SPS Wellness Program. Instructional planning, this is gonna be huge, and I'm gonna bring this back to you all in October. This was something that I actually wanted to do this year, but we actually thought it was gonna be too much coming out of the pandemic. We want to be able to transition all of our high schools to the four-by-four block schedule. This is something I'm gonna bring to the board in October for an official vote. And I have to bring it to you in October because that's when we start our master schedule planning process for the next year, okay? This will allow students to take more courses during their high school career. Thirty-two credits. We are gonna create a Suffolk Public Schools thirty-two credit diploma. Probably a superintendent seal or something that we're gonna put on there. And we need to make sure that we have some incentives to make sure that our kids stay in school all four years. As a reminder to the school board and to the school community, an advanced diploma is twenty-six credits and a standard diploma is twenty-two. So either way, kids are gonna have to come back for their senior year. We're not gonna allow juniors to take government, we're not gonna allow juniors to take English twelve. I'm gonna say that one more time. We're not gonna allow juniors to take government, we're not gonna allow to take English twelve. And I'm saying this because of experience. In the five years I was a high school principal, I had the four-by-four schedule. This is the missing link right here to improve on our graduation rate. Some of the feedback that Ms. Story has given me before in the past has been about finding strategies to improve our graduation rate. This is it. But this is also gonna help us when it comes to increasing our advanced diploma status. Hypothetically, a kid that takes Algebra I Part One as a freshman because they don't have the math skills that are necessary, the chances of that student earning an advanced diploma on our current schedule are slim to none. Or if a kid fails a class, they can actually repeat that class during the spring semester. And I guarantee you, our high school faculty and staff is gonna love this because you're only teaching three classes a day. Three a day, every day, right? Less papers to grade during the semester. But we also have to think about, folks, what we've seen with our achievement gaps for our special education students. This will allow them to be able to get more support and resources because they'll have more opportunity each semester. And our fastest-growing population, ladies and gentlemen, is our English language learners. You know, that number is growing every day, right? And one of the things that Dr. Branch and I have talked about is that we have a high school kid or even a middle school kid that once they come to Suffolk and they're in our grade year, let's say hypothetically, they do not speak any English at all, and we will put them in English reading, you know, ELL one or ESOL one or ESOL two, right? For English language, first semester, one, second semester, two, sophomore year, ESOL three, ESOL four, junior year, first semester, now we introduce English nine. Second semester, English ten, senior year, English eleven, English twelve. Boom, we just have ELL kids that just graduated on time. That hasn't happened because a lot of times our kids have not had the opportunity to take English eleven and twelve by the time their time is up in high school. We want to be able to change that, right? Now, I do want to be open and let you all know, I've talked about improving the graduation rate, but that last third bullet on there is gonna be key. It will probably require more instructional staff. Kids are taking eight classes instead of seven, okay? Kids will be taking eight classes instead of seven, but we're gonna have to be very strategic with that because we know there's a teacher shortage, especially when it comes to some of our tough-to-field areas. You know, we basically now, I can be honest and tell you all, we basically now have our central office the way that it should have been. So now it's really about focusing on more and making sure that our kids are getting what they need. We've added supports, but now let's change the schedule. So as a reminder, I want to bring this back to you all for a vote in October twenty twenty-two. We'll give you some more information on some of the necessary things that are gonna have to occur. We're gonna have to change our program of studies, but we've been working up towards that with some of the different electives that Dr. Lawson-Devonport has been presenting to the board. Our professional learning focus is want to let everyone know what we're gonna focus on for next year, just like we did last year. We're gonna bring in world-renowned speaker, Mr. Thomas Murray, who's the director of the Innovation and Future-Ready Schools. This is gonna happen during Teacher Work Week. Thomas Murray is outstanding, he's written like six or seven books. And the message that we've asked him to bring is that this is your year right here to show what you can do. This is gonna be your opportunity in year two of some of the things we talked about. You all remember at Convocation that part of the reason why the federal government gave us money in three-year implements, increments, is because they actually felt that it's gonna take three years to recover from the pandemic. And I told everybody we was gonna do it in two. And we are well on our way to doing that, but we also have to make sure that we motivate and reinvigorate our staff. Also want to let you all know about some of the things that we're really gonna have focused on when it comes to tier-one instruction. The challenge of going from virtual to hybrid and coming back face-to-face is not all of our staff members adjusted to that concept. We had some that still thought they were in virtual learning, and we're using Canvas for everything that they did, kind of eliminating the whole concept and idea of direct instruction, where there actually should be a delicate balance between using instructional technology and direct instruction in the field. We're gonna continue with our project-based learning assessments. We're gonna continue with our instructional technology, but the technology is supposed to be a supplement, it's supposed to be there for research, it's supposed to be there for collaboration. It is not gonna always be the primary form of instruction in the classroom. The teachers are gonna get back to the instructional innovation plans and use them the way that they were designed to do, where you actually have technology use built into your daily lesson plan. We're gonna continue to take a look at our professional learning communities. One of the things that I've actually asked the TNL team to do, especially when it comes to classes that only may have one at the secondary level in the building. Who is to say that our professional learning communities have to be all teachers within one building? Why can't the AP Biology teacher at Lakeland collaboratively plan with the AP Biology teacher at Nansmer River in Kings Fork? Nothing says you have to be in a face-to-face space to do that, and we've already proven a lot of that with our virtual learning that we've done. And folks, we still have to talk about the SEL. That is real. That is real. You know, we talked about how the pandemic, you never know how it affected individual families or individual students or individual staffs, but now the after effect, there are still staff members, community members, students that still have anxiety about COVID nineteen. And they have every right to be. If you take a look at our rates, we're just like we were when we were in February, right now, right now. So as we continue to try to find ways to support our kids so they can make better choices, that's still gonna be a part of that. We're gonna continue to work with our continuous learning and continuous improvement in our school performance plans. And just as a reminder, this was reinforced and passed by the State Board of Education Cultural Competency for Teachers. The good thing about that is SPS, we were already ahead of the game because we did a lot of that last year. But we have to be able to reinforce that because now it's a requirement and with the new staff that's coming on board. We've had questions about number of staff members that we have lost here in SPS. And one of the things that I have asked Dr. Brown and Ms. Avery to do was to come up with an expansive plan of how we're gonna combat a lot of that. I wanted to list some of what you see on here for some of the schools that we've had talent acquisition and went to job fairs for, including a new focus on our HBCUs. In the past, I've asked Ms. Avery to go south. Now I'm also asking her to go west. So you're gonna see some different recruitment treats, trips as we move further west. We also have virtual job fairs, which work better because we were getting candidates, ladies and gentlemen, that were logging in interested in Suffolk Public Schools from California. Why? Because there weren't any teaching jobs in California at the time. You can see some of those dates to be ahead up there, March ninth, tenth, and eleventh. Face-to-face one day, we just had on May fourteenth. We are hiring new people every day, every day. I tried to call Ms. Avery for two hours a day, she was literally on the phone during intense with new staff for two straight hours. And I'm really proud of the work that they've been working on. But some of the questions that people have had, so what are you doing to make it so that we have strong retention here in SPS? Well, here are some of the bullets. For the new teachers that came last year, we're gonna do this again next year, we gave them, when they came to their first meeting, we gave them two hundred and fifty dollars. Welcome to SPS. That was ninety-nine teachers got two hundred and fifty dollars. But we also, and this is Ms. Forghman's brainstorm, a two thousand bonus for hard-to-fill positions. I'm talking about math, I'm talking about special education. Places where we know, we know there just are not a lot of candidates there. I think I said this to you all last year, but I'm just gonna remind you all because the numbers have actually decreased. Last year, there were a total of twelve math candidates in the entire Commonwealth of Virginia, twelve in the entire Commonwealth of Virginia, and seven of them went to the private industry. So we have to find more ways to bring our people back and really find ways for our young folks in college to think that being a teacher is cool again. That's the key. We also, with the right grant, Recruitment and Center for Public Education, seven of our staff members got five thousand dollars. That was a partnership grant that Ms. Avery kind of had done some research on, talking to some of her other colleagues in the region. And there were specific criteria for that, including when you were hired. That's another way that we basically can lock you in to being with SPS. And another seventy-five hundred dollars for your Grow Your Own grant. And I got something special planned for some of those honor graduates that you all saw at graduation, and I'm not gonna let the cat out of the bag right now. But we have some different strategies that we're gonna use to recruit and retain staff, including something that we're gonna do this summer for everyone to sign their contracts that will be going out tomorrow. I also want to let you all know where we're gonna spend some of this money. And I know that last month we had an extensive discussion about sinkholes. That continues. Literally like a day or two after that meeting, Mr. Napier sent us a, Ms. Forghman, an email, eighty-four thousand, new sinkhole. It's continuing. But I want to talk about since there was some concern, there's some anxiety. You know, I have a Facebook Live tomorrow, two o'clock, and a couple of questions related to, what are we doing additional security-wise since the latest tragedy in Uvalde? And we were actually, we're already being proactive in some of those things. John Littlefield, who already worked on additional security cameras at all of our elementary schools, at all of them. We see the intercom clock replacement. We want to try to modernize some of our older buildings. And we know that some of our schools are further down the road when it comes to our CIP. Chromebooks, four thousand units, you have an agenda item today. That's just a replacement of end-of-life Chromebooks. But we have other Chromebooks that we've had to repair over and over again, and it's just not sustainable. Digital signage, we put monitors up because we want our schools to be able to advertise all the great things that's happening there. Fiber infrastructure, you all have heard about this happening throughout the city. These are some of the things that Mr. Littlefield has partnered with the cities on, Kings Fork High School to Elephants Fork, JFK to Mac Ben, really increasing the fiber optics there. Audio/video lighting in our auditoriums at Kings Fork Middle School, Nansmer River's gym and Lakeland's gym. We needed to really brighten the places up. This summer, and Mr. Napier's already started with this, Elephants Fag HVAC system replacement, Lakeland and Nansmer Rivers HVAC system replacement, Mac Ben, Northern Shores. Mac Ben, Northern Shores HVAC system actuator valve replacement. These are things that has to be done. When people ask us, what did we spend the $3.575 million on? Or what we've spent Carazak money on? There it is, right there. We're always going to itemize out specifically what we're doing to upgrade the infrastructure in our schools. You also see, I wanted to bold this, new construction design work. Had an email communication with Mr. Moore, we're actually meeting again next week. Design work going to start for the bid process for the new JFK. That money's being allocated, 7.5 million to start design work and to also start design work on the new SAO. It needs to happen. Painting, you can see there, roof replacement as well as floor replacement. These are some of the things that we're working on. Floor replacement at Forest Glen in the main office, Cheltenham Woods, the media center, Nansuman Parkway to classrooms. And again, ongoing with the stormwater systems piping repairs and replacement for those sinkholes. I also want to show you all some of the pictures right there so you can see the new tracks that we put down at our schools. Lakeland, Nansuman River, Kings Fork, parking lot replacement at Forest Glen, John Yates, Lakeland. Turf Field, that's the picture you see in the bottom left-hand corner. That turf field is coming along very nicely at Lakeland High School. And one of the agenda items that you have today that you'll be putting action on is for us to start our next one at Nansuman River. Remember, we're going to do Kings Fork High School last because they have the most sinkholes. Okay, we're going in order with it. So we wanted to make sure that you all understand and our school community fully understands exactly all of the facilities upgrades that we're doing for the school division. Our CPBA, you can see the two sound booths right there at Lakeland High School coming along well. Some of the sound patterns that we have put up. And then next year, we're going to start the auditorium renovation. We're going to have this brand-new Center for Performing and Production Arts. We're going to have the state-of-the-art auditorium to go along with it. We got to replace the mobile unit decking at Kilby Shores. The decking is what goes along the bottom underneath the stairs, right? That stuff rots out. That's also a sign those mobile units have been there too long. It's time for us to build some schools. Fire panel upgrade, master clock upgrades. And we're also going to begin discussions because this time next year is when we start design work on the Northern Shores expansion. These are the plans that we have in place. We're giving our entire school community an entire year vision of what we're going to do. Now, this is another big project, and I'm also going to give expansive credit to Wendy Forsman for this. We're going to create our own pharmacy and it's going to partner with the CCOP Pharmaceutical Tech Program, right? Everything that we do is a piece of the puzzle where it all fits together. Our plan, when we create this pharmacy for SPS staff and their families, will be able to find another way to save money out of our staff's pockets. Anywhere between 20, 25, maybe 30, depending on how hard Wendy does hardball. Some of the things that we're going to be able to do to show the folks that we care. And the training room, the first main room that we have in the operations center, that's the area that we're going to try to convert to doing that. And we'll kind of bring that back to you probably later on in October as well to have some more, or maybe August to have some more information about it with the potential January 2023 open. We have some unused space at the operations center. We're going to move the communications department over there, for example. And we're doing this because we were waiting for Phase Two, but Phase Two, as we all know, has been moved further down the CIP. So let's use that space as well as also making sure that we're partnering with our students in the Pharmaceutical Tech Program so they can get hands-on experience while serving their own teachers and staff. Great opportunity for us. So folks, that is actually my vision for 2022. It's a lot of information that I gave to you all today. I'm going to reiterate a lot of the same information tomorrow during the Facebook Live at 2:00. But we're always going to try to make sure that we're going to be very clear every June so that you all know what we have planned for the summer as well as for the upcoming school year. At this time, Dr. Buck, I'll turn it back over to you if there's any questions from the board.
Thank you. Board members, we decided to do this this way when we were planning the agenda because this is our segue into our part of the work session. So Dr. Gordon has given us what he plans to do. And we're looking for our plan for the next few years, looking toward our plan and our goals and what our indicators are going to look like. So just before we move on to our tables, I'm going to give you the opportunity to ask any questions that you might have right now. Board members, do you have questions of Dr. Gordon about what he's presented to us? Board members, do you have questions?
I do.
Okay, Board Member Howell.
It was already on. I'm excited to hear about increasing the internships because probably all of you can attest to this. The greatest experience in college was the internship. All that book knowledge was a start. But until you know what to do with it, it's really not going to impact your workforce. And then also the mention of coaching and mentoring and volunteering. Now that I feel like we're trying to return to a stable level of engagement, that's a huge resource to try and tackle the discipline. And I think it is a good conversation that we need to have continually and plan intentionally for that. What, how are we? You mentioned the growing ELL population. I like the Special Ed Support Group for Parents. It's long overdue and very much needed. As a parent of a child with a disability, I can say that it's a different experience being a teacher of one and then a parent. What are we doing for the ELL population, though? Do we have a support plan in place for that group? Because the kids, as well as the parents, struggle to assimilate.
Yeah, we basically have been tackling that almost on a regional level. One of the things that we did have in the budget last year was to add two ELL staff members because of that growing population that we were seeing. And the plan is, Ms. Howell, to kind of have those staff members travel with the kids as they matriculate through our grades because we think that the trust, one of the biggest things that I've learned when I was a principal at James Monroe and I had 18% ELL population, is the trust factor of knowing you're in a new country and finding someone you can actually believe in. So having those students move with the teachers as they go through the grade levels is going to be our plan. We're going to put together an ELL group, but we want to be able to get some more experience. Dr. Branch had a conversation with one of my former ELL teachers, who's now an administrator in central office in southwest Virginia, about some of the strategies they put in place. So we want to be able to kind of pattern the ELL parent support group after what we did with the spared group. That will be something that's probably still kind of in the early phases, but that is a part of the vision.
Okay. And one other question, well, a comment really, in reference to hiring and retaining teachers. I know that salary is a very important factor as we've talked about. It's one of the top two reasons mentioned in an exit interview, the other one being morale, school climate, whatever, however you want to term it. So it's just something that I think needs to be part of the discussion as well. Because, you know, we have to address the teachers that are leaving for neighboring divisions for less money. Money is not the driving factor in that situation. And so, you know, we have to plan intentionally beyond the salary scale, which is definitely a good start. But I think there's other conversation to be had there. I had one more question and it's out the window.
I mean, to your point, support is the other reason why teachers are leaving any school division, is money and support. And so one of the things that Ms. Forsman's team is actually working on is career pathways. And that's career pathways for all of our employee groups. That gives you an avenue to advance in your career here in SPS, including us expanding our college/university partners so that our paraprofessionals, for example, you help us out, they go to Regent University. Regent University and Norfolk State University are the two schools we look for. When it comes to a master's degree, we've partnered already with University of Virginia and William &amp; Mary. And I'm getting ready to announce this partnership with Virginia Tech in the fall for anyone who's trying to do a doctoral program. But we're doing the same things with our facilities and planners, planning group. Terry Napier and Ms. Forsman have been working for some certifications so they can go from a, you know, tradesman to a master tradesman or a journeyman to a master journeyman. We want to be able to show that you can grow here. The cohort model's a great way for us to be able to save money for the people that are actually taking the classes. But we're also torn around a little bit of tuition reimbursement too, which will be something we'll talk about hopefully later on.
Yeah, I was thinking also along the lines, almost like SEL for teachers. You know, they need to feel heard and supported beyond academic or professional growth, but just heard as an individual and maybe they need support groups too within somehow.
Well, I want you to, I want you to save that thought. I don't mean to cut across you, but I'm so glad I was really thinking because I have a job for you.
You have a job for me? Oh, okay, yep, I've got room between 6:00 and 8:00 AM on Sundays.
No, today.
That's all that I think that I have, so thank you.
I just want to add on to something that Board Member Howell said with regard to the ESL population. I know one of the things that we, well, that I ran into as a military wife, we are in a wonderful area to find volunteers for that English as a Second Language group. I found myself coming from Germany, working, when I went to another base, working with a German child who came to a school where I was working and not realizing that I was just going to walk into working in an ELL situation. But I did. And I mean, it was just happenstance, but it was a good thing that I walked into a traumatic situation and was able to help just for a little while because my German really wasn't that good at that time. But fortunately, it helped in that situation. But I think that using the military and military spouses, military dependents as a resource is a good idea because there are a lot of them who are there and who volunteer.
Great idea.
So that's something that we might be able to use.
Yeah, I'm sure Dr. Branch is taking notes behind me. I was just looking forward, but I'm sure that's a great idea.
Okay. Are there other questions, board members? Other questions, comments?
I just have a comment, Madam Chair. I just want to say that I was pleased to see the four-by-four block scheduling because I think definitely, as you stated in your visioning statement, that it will certainly improve our graduation rate, which will give our students more opportunities to repeat in the case that they're not successful the first time. So for a long time, I remember when it was introduced and even then, I was, at that time, I was a principal with Suffolk Public Schools when we learned about this. And I always thought that we should be able to do something like this for our students. So I thought that was a good thing. And I like the transitioning piece. First time coming into school, fifth to sixth grade, eighth grade to ninth grade, and then when they're leaving. So that's really important because when, for example, I worked with elementary students. So the fifth graders, when they were leaving, they were the big dogs, the ones, they were in charge, you know? They were the oldest ones in the school. Then here they are, they're moving to sixth grade, and then they're at the bottom. And sometimes it's difficult for them to make that transition from one level to another. And so I think that's extremely important that we're focusing on that. That will improve our instruction too. All of these things that we can only get better and we can improve. And we're always looking for ways to improve. Are we perfect? No, but we're getting there. We're addressing our students' needs and that's first and foremost what we need to do.
Wonderful. And I have a job for you as well. And so over here, do we have any more questions before we move to these wonderful tables in front of us? Okay.
Thank you. Dr. Gordon, thank you for your vision and your foresight. And of course, as always, I'm happy to see that you included those with disabilities. And I'm a big advocate for parents because they need support. And like Minnie said already, that support group that maybe we can create for the parents, grandparents, whoever the guardian is, and they create their own family village that they can help one another with whatever's going on because they may feel like that they're on an island by themselves. But hopefully Suffolk Public School will create something for them where they can feel more comfortable, learn more about the disabilities, how to handle it at home. Because when their kids leave school, they have to go back home. And so I think that will help us all, all the way around. And I appreciate you never forgetting that population.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Madam Chair. A commendable lot of work to be done. Your staff is going to be very busy. Everybody's going to be very busy, but very commendable. Piggybacking on what Ms. Jenkins said, the involvement of parents. You know, we have always strived to make the extra effort. But I think this is a move in the right direction. A lot of parents that I have encountered over the last few months are just beside themselves. They don't know what to do. They need some guidance. They don't have enough information, they're not informed, they don't know where to go when they have a question. And they don't know how to ask the question sometime, you know? And I think all of these things are going to be supports that will help them. I think that will improve our schools 100% because of that parental involvement. We're going to see a mass improvement in relationships with the administration and the teachers. And that will help their students. Also, I've been a high school teacher in my past for many years here in Suffolk. And I always thought, one day, one day, and I talked to this, about this with Dr. Whitney, Dr. Harrison. I think I mentioned it to Dr. Gordon, the four-by-four. To me, that is a no-win situation because a student can repeat a class. They can take more subjects, they can expand, you know? There are so many ways you can look at this, and I think that will be very helpful. It will improve our graduation rates, I think, a lot. And it will help students that are struggling, you know? And are falling through those cracks. And, you know, it's hard to sit in a class and you've got a poor average and you know you're going to fail. You know, you sit there all year, why aren't you repeating it then? You know, start over. You know, remediation immediately and maybe you can grasp the information and move forward. I've always thought that was the answer and I look forward to that coming. I will be a positive vote on that. And the social-emotional learning, I know that is a big piece of everything now and we need to stay on that. If Ms. Forsman thought up the pharmacy idea, I think that's wonderful. Any way that we can help our employees, I think it's excellent. And I have spoken with many and they have said they're very proud of what has been done in the past for the employees, trying to help them keep up with inflation and whatever. And I think this will be another way of doing that and telling them that we do appreciate them and that they are a vital part of our SPS. And thank you for including that. And if it's Ms. Forsman's idea, wonderful. And I know she'll come up with the money somehow.
It's not going to cost us that much money. That's the good thing about it.
That's a good thing. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. We are going to start the new process now for the next few minutes, the job that I told you you'd have. We are going to stop what we're doing at 6:15, so it's very important that we move when we move. We're going to start, Dr. Branch, with our strategic planning. And we're going to look today at only two areas. We're going to look at student achievement and climate and culture because I told Dr. Gordon he'd take 45 minutes, and so he did. Okay? And so he did. All right, I told you it would take 45 minutes. I know what I'm talking about when it comes to time. And we are going to be finished, as we promised, by 6:15, all of what we do. But we're going to move to tables. So we're going to have, this is your job, you're going to take your chairs and you're going to move to those tables. When I thought of you, Ms. Mayo, because this has been something that's been very important to you, student achievement. So you're going to sit at our student achievement table right there. So you want to take your chair around.
Just be careful.
Yeah, well, we won't have time to work on this if we do too much of the overview, but stay right there, don't move. Okay, so.
Be careful when you're going across these. Please do not let the chair roll across, you're going to have to lift it.
Okay, all right. So can we move them there or we might have to sit here because some of you wanted to sit? You're going to be the climate person.
I'm going to be what?
Climate. You're going to be over here.
Oh.
Okay.
Okay.
That's the job that I had for you, okay? So we're going to look today at climate and culture and student achievement. Uh huh. Board Member Story, you're going to be over with climate as well. You're going to be over with student achievement, okay? And you can decide which one you'd like, student achievement or climate. Because you go back and forth on me from time to time. So you can decide which, which area you want to work. You're over this side, and those two are on this side because they talk more about student achievement and culture. You guys said you wanted to be together as we did this. You can roll it on the floor. Just lift it up over the, over the, over the cord, not all the way. Yeah, you can roll it around that way, Cher. And take that one on the end. Wendell's not here.
Yes, they're eighteen to twenty-three. And so then we're going to look at, and most of those we've already met, if not all of those. And so the ones that we're looking at now are twenty-three, are going to be twenty-three and for the next five years. And for the next five years. So there'll be extensions of what we have. Now, if there are things that are ongoing, they might look the same. Because there are some things that are ongoing, of course, we want to continue to improve.
Mr. Littlefield's going to screen just the sample data sources that you were looking for.
So you can see what you're looking for, and then you can just click it on. It looks like this. Let me come over there. And again, we're just going to get started this evening. This would be an all-day thing.
You never get comments because they're anonymous. And we protect that. Because some of them mention personal information and so we need to protect that. And yes, we protect it as we ask them to do anonymous. You're not the employer, because as a school board, you govern the school board, but you're not the employer.
That's interesting. It's not a problem.
Well, sure, but I'm just assuming, I guess there was communication amongst administrators. He just was referencing doing a senior staff survey regarding small classes. And Mr. Turner asked him to add an open-ended question to the end of it, so it just had like a reading scale or such. And so I'm just trying to clarify, if you are, you have to clear that's the same. He's been also going to give an additional assessment. So I appreciate you weren't there, I'm sorry.
Okay. Let me run some value shot. The now expert. This is what I want to ask. What's now the word you're worried about? Some of those responses about construction, basically, and student. Then I have screening for students to create something that helps students prepare and stuff. Basically, it's a process to just to just.
The wording from the user, like, if they're on those information.
That's what I want to ask.
So if you say increase.
Okay.
Of course offerings that do whatever. Our wording will give us the direction. You can't, you can't.
But see, we don't want to put something out there that no one will hear. And so that's where all this data comes in.
The basis, our basis.
But still, I think we should, I think we should have to give us a reasonable. You understand what I'm saying? We're not going to say, you're going to do it first now.
Correct. And I have a question, they just make something out of the size question. And I think some different. But as compared to the other, not each person, like, this, there seems to be. Maybe we want to decrease by five percent annually in this area. That's going to capture it, where that is not such a far stretch goal. So you're three scores though.
So if we have levels that we're stating, it's really important.
This is where we're looking at. This is where we are. So we're not going to see like low levels, we're not going to have problems here. But see, we have problems. But you know, what's that? We can say, but you have. And see, this is where we can see an error. I mean, how do you go?
And they're all.
Yeah.
They're all, they're all indicators.
But my data is right. What matters is how the teachers do that.
And wouldn't it be appropriate? Because we're going to look at our data, the achievement data, and we're going to see where the needle is moving for our students. That's our assignment. So a statement like this, we will ensure that our decisions are data-driven.
Okay.
How are we going to have things to do? Where, how can we increase that? So what, what is that?
Okay.
This means more than what we do. What all the more. The how, the how is yours.
Okay. My question is, would it be?
Okay, so this is the how.
We should see that presenting.
We're going to do that side, we're going to make professional. There.
Okay. Well, I don't think, I don't think that.
Well, see, one of our strategies would be to increase our. Questions and capacity for our students. So with that, I think you're, you're, that's what we're. So I'd say, you're in your personal. And I see that, but it's okay because you want to hear that as we're reporting.
Oh, no, I'm.
So it's a bit more of a lower training.
Across the board, every survey question was something that the teachers understood. And we can increase that question.
That's what we're going to do, we're going to make sure the teachers have that. You're in the building, you're in elephant port right now, you're in the building.
So it's not a question, it's the items overall, and you took it out. So there might be some things that are really bad.
All right, now already.
You give a, this is an average of an average.
But that's all they. Okay.
So there was. So there was something, uh, ten questions number eight was written. You can never, I know, for the eight percent rate. It's going to get averaged in, with question number two. When you said nine percent, eight percent rate, and then average that in.
Because y'all were giving us like, we look up a metric. That's what y'all was saying.
So all, all you have to do is increase to. It's not so, it seems like it's not too hard. Sure, I can get it. Well, I can do that.
But let's go on.
Let's move to.
Make us increase by seven years. There you go.
But I'm thinking like, well, this is like our support schedule.
Ladies, ladies, don't delay. Okay. Ladies, ladies.
This is too small.
Remember, ladies, remember that all you are trying to do is get some idea of how to do the process. You don't have a finished problem, so you cannot. This is just.
No, what I'm saying is, we can break it down, we just. Staff satisfaction with professional development opportunities, but that percent being part of that survey is in another. I'm saying we can, but these are not all related, this staff will. Some of them speak to leadership opportunities, some of them speak to. Well, there's a bit of it in the first pair, I don't know. Only some may have percent. Then if you skip down to. She tells the whole time, is that the? So what are we doing? Something to increase, improve the staff development opportunity relative to their job. And then the indicators. The indicators would be how we're going to know that we did it. So a staff survey could indicate that. Leadership, the certification of leadership, program.
Why? So smart role.
Yes, I, yeah. On this survey. Correct, but that is part of the goals. That's part of the smart goal, is putting the three percent in there to indicators how we're going to know that we met that three percent goal. But it doesn't have to just be that. I'm saying we don't limit ourselves to just one survey has the god of all measurements. We can indicate professional development as a family position. Position or whatever, by the number of votes that. Obtain a master's degree through our, sorry, your cohorts or completely leadership gap. I'm just throwing that out, I don't know. I'm just trying to think of indicators that carry on. Looking at egg. For Saturday, how many you sign? Look at a summary. Okay, so just to be clear, what you're proving staff development. By three percent.
We have the call count at this point in time. Thank you guys. We got a team person over here, put it all together.
No, 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 no. Don't know who you are, it's fine, I'm hoping you want to. I prefer you. Okay, then I'll take it. You're going to collect mine. I need a problem. It's.
We moved back to our tables with the budget. Thank you all so much. That was fun.
Was that your, was that your chair you brought with you? So that means that was her chair.
Thank you, darling.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, good.
Good. Go get that chair. John, can you get it?
Yeah.
Okay.
At this particular time, we have a budget adoption that we need to go through. This is a wonderful thing because as we understand it, the Governor and General Assembly have adopted a budget. So we're ready to say what we need to say, Dr. Gordon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We were excited when the budget was passed by the General Assembly on June 1st. And I am going to call to the podium our Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Forsman, who will be here to answer any potential questions from the board. She does have one update from the budget that we do want to make clear as there are some, I don't really want to call it unfunded mandates, but some things for clarification. So Ms. Forsman, before the board officially votes on the budget, can you discuss those two items with them?
As, good evening. As part of the proposal from the General Assembly that's before the Governor now to sign, there were two items that are not included in the operating budget. And I want to give you those items and tell you why they're not included. One of those items was the school construction program that the General Assembly put in place. We've been allotted $4.4 million for that. However, that money carries forward to next fiscal year as well. So it cannot go in the operating fund where I have to stop the money and get reappraisal. So it will go in the grant fund so that it can roll over and be used for both years. So that money will go in the grants fund. I've already accounted for it in the grants fund budget that's in your budget book. I have $5.5 million there. It says $4.4 is what we really have. But we have enough appropriation that the City Council has already given us to cover that. The other item, as you know, the General Assembly approved a $1,000 bonus for our SOQ employees payable in December. However, they're using federal pass-through money in a grant form to give us that money. So they will reimburse us, once we've spent that money, in December. They'll reimburse us using federal money that the state received. So again, that money can't go in our operating budget because I will have to account for it to the auditors and to the state as federal money. So it will go in our grants fund as well. And then I will be coming to you in December with a transfer from the operating fund to the grants fund for the amount that will have to match to get everybody a bonus. Because they gave us $1.3 million for 1,237 employees to receive the bonus. As you know, we have well more than 1,237 employees.
Yeah.
So it will cost an additional $800,000 approximately to get that to happen. So we'll be coming to you in December, or in, well, probably November, to get you to approve that and approve the transfer. So I just want to make you aware of those two items that were given to us by the General Assembly and are on the Governor's desk, but are not in the operating fund. So you can't look for them in that fund because that's not where they sit. Any questions?
Board members. Okay, now, we're good. Okay.
Madam Chair, I recommend that a move that we support the upcoming budget is presented.
All righty, this is an action item. Is there a second?
A second to motion.
The move and seconded that we adopt the recommended budget. That's Resolution 21 slash 22 dash 23. Are there questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Board members, please vote. Board Member Howell?
Yes.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
Vice Chair Byram?
Yes.
Board Chair Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you, thank you. At this time, we will recess. Thank you, ladies and... Dr. Gordon and everybody else who helped out with this portion of the meeting will take a recess at this time.
And welcome to this evening's meeting of the Suffolk Public Schools. We're ready to reopen and begin with our regular meeting. This is Mayo from the Holy Neck Borough will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Byram.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the agenda.
As second to motion.
Madam Clerk.
Board members, please vote. Board Member Howell?
Yes.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
Vice Chair Byram?
Yes.
Board Chair Brooks-Buck?
Yes.
Motion passed.
At this time, we welcome citizen comments on the agenda. We're going to ask all citizens who participate, we really would like to hear your comments, and so we ask all citizens who participate to abide by our rules as read by our clerk. She will give you the information you need to participate. Madam Clerk.
It is the intent of the school board to ensure that the affairs of the board be conducted in an open and orderly manner, that all persons desiring to address the board are afforded an opportunity to do so in the order in which they sign up to speak, that persons in attendance may observe and hear the proceedings of the board without distraction, and that the board and the members of the board and board employees are able to transact the business of the board with minimal disruption. Any persons addressing the board shall: 1. Confine their comments to matters germane to the business of the school board of the City of Suffolk; 2. Refrain from words or statements which from their usual construction and common acceptance are construed as insults and tend to incite violence or breach of the peace; 3. Refrain from obscenity, vulgarity, or other breach of respect; 4. Comply with the time limit for public comment as set by the board, which can be up to five minutes unless the board through the exercise of its discretion decides to allow less than five minutes for public comment; 5. Refrain from cumulative or repetitive remarks; and 6. Refrain from making any comment regarding any pending student discipline or employee grievance matters. The appropriate form for such matters is the applicable administrative hearing provided by state law or where appropriate court proceedings. Expressive activities including but not limited to: petitioning, picketing, displaying signs or posters, solicitation, demonstrating, pamphlet distribution, and conducting polls shall not be permitted in the waiting areas and corridors of any school buildings in which the board is meeting. Persons addressing the board may deliver to the board or its clerk written materials including reports, statements, exhibits, letters, or signed petitions, and may also make use of any chart or graph during their verbal presentation. The school board welcomes comments from the public as appropriate. Board members will listen to public comment but will not comment, deliberate, or take action on them. The school board chair may direct the superintendent to investigate items and report back to the school board at a subsequent meeting. The chairman or other presiding officer shall preserve decorum and shall decide all questions of public order, subject to appeal to the board. At the request of the chairman or superintendent, a city police officer shall act as sergeant-at-arms at tonight's board meeting. The officer shall, under the direction of the chairman, superintendent, or other presiding officer, have charge of the auditorium, the waiting areas, and corridors adjacent thereto, and shall prevent disorder or interruption of the business of the board. Please state your name and address before speaking.
Our speaker for, we have one speaker signed up this evening. It's Dr. Deborah Walstrom. She will speak on proposed policy amendments. Dr. Walstrom.
Thank you so much. Good evening all. Tonight I bring you thoughts related to policy. In tonight's board packet, you'll find several policies on their second read, and I would like to speak to one specifically as it seems the wrong judgment syndrome has set in and taken hold. My concern is for Ordinance 21/22-39 in which you agree to turn over your power in approving contracts to the superintendent. It is my observation that the amendment was brought to the policy committee and the policy puppets agreed to move the policy forward without adequate or serious discussion of the implication of the implication of the policy. One question the committee members did not ask was, who wants this change? You are not scoring three pointers on this. At the policy committee, Mr. Waller calls the policy "a method to strengthen the boundaries of the superintendent." But the boundaries, he says, the policy sets are already in place in Virginia's code. It doesn't matter who you are, you cannot overspend the budget. It is against the law whether your policy states it or not, and you know that. That's a cover for what's really happening if you vote to approve this policy amendment. You'll be voting to give the power granted to you by the Commonwealth to enter contracts. Here are a few reasons why this is important to discuss before making an errant decision. First, the superintendent would be given full power for entering contracts without the approval of the school board, an unacceptable poor practice in the world of business. The change in policy gives the superintendent full power over the contracts for things like furniture and technology and consultants and textbooks and services and anything else that's purchased. Having almost complete power over spending does make it easier for the superintendent, but you didn't hire him for an easy job. The board is still accountable and liable for the contracts even though you don't approve them. With this policy change, the superintendent can sign any contract for any amount at any time. He can sign away, and you're the accountable and liable party. Is that really what you want? The school board's role is to oversee and monitor finances, not give the power for doing so to one person. This is hugely problematic. A large part of the school division world is managed through contracts for goods and services, contracts you would likely never see. You don't think that would happen? Well, remember just a couple years ago when the superintendent signed a contract with BSN? His idea was not bad, but the process was terrible, including the part where he didn't think board members needed to see contracts. Actions such as the superintendent's aggressive refusal to share contracts with board members takes the school division backward in terms of accountability. There are numerous things he believes the board should not see, and it's not just limited to contracts. He cannot be trusted with total control of approving contracts that we as citizens, you and me, are left here to pay. If you choose to give up this control, then a key part of your role is over. There would be nothing left really for you to do. I understand that you love this superintendent much, but it would still be a fraud risk to allow the superintendent to have the power you should have over contracts. Please discuss the issue about whether the superintendent approving pretty much everything is really good policy in the interest of the school board and the citizens it serves. I believe it is not. Thank you.
Having no other speakers, we'll move on. Dr. Gordon, to your good news report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to call to the podium our Office of Communication and Community Engagement, Ms. Athelena Ward, for the good news report. She's going to speak about some of our SPS alumni, members of our Leadership Academy for Potential Principals who are sitting here on the fourth row, project lead the way, our CC C cap culinary arts students and their experience with our world-renowned chef, Malcolm Mitchell, our PBS Kids Writers Contest, senior awards nights that many of you all attended for our three high schools, athletic wins, and the May Teacher Spotlight. And I will close out with a calendar of special events. Ms. Ward?
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. Good evening, Madam Chair, vice chair members of the board, and those watching online present with us tonight. As we present our final good news report for the 2021-2022 school year, we've had several alumni highlights since September, and it's always good to see and hear about the things our students accomplish after they leave Suffolk Public Schools and journey out into the world. Tonight, we are highlighting Ms. Skylar Old from Nansman River High, class of 2018. Skylar graduated early from Old Dominion University with honors in December 2021 with a 4.0 GPA, and she did work full-time as a teacher, excuse me, as a teacher aide throughout CSEP alternative schools. I'm going to pause for a moment just to invite Ms. Catherine Pichon to the podium to provide an explanation of our Leadership Academy for Potential Principals and to present a special recognition to the 2021-2022 cohort.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Gordon. I am excited about this, these wonderful candidates we have here for the Leadership Academy for Potential Principals. This program is designed to give them the experience and leadership opportunities, build the future leaders of Suffolk Public Schools. They get experiences with other leaders, they learn about finance, they learn about human resources management, they get to shadow other leaders in the division, and they've done a wonderful job, a two-year cohort, a great, great group of people, and we are excited to say that they have graduated the program. So, we're going to go ahead and call them up to the front. We're going to ask you to stand up here together so you can take a picture with Dr. Gordon as a group. So, we have Angela Bell. She is a graduation coach at Kings Fork High School. She couldn't make it, okay. We have Courtney Branch. She's a fifth-grade teacher at Booker T. Washington Elementary, and she is also one of our elementary summer school administrators. We have Jonathan Kriegmer. He's an eighth-grade English teacher at JFK Middle School. And Ms. Cynthia Devers could not be here today. She's actually at a conference. She's the supervisor of social and emotional support with Suffolk Public Schools. We have Stevie Green. He's the school counselor at Lakeland High School. We have Corey Hamlin, assistant principal at John Yates Middle School. Lauren Lee is the World History and African-American Studies teacher at Lakeland High School, and she will also be serving as an elementary summer school administrator this summer. We have Dr. Sabrina Lee, assistant principal at Southwestern Elementary School. We have Angela McElroy, oceanography teacher at Nansman River High School. We have Christine Pisani, academic coach at Hillpoint Elementary School, and she will also be serving as an elementary summer school administrator. We have Ashley Skinner, graduation coach at Nansman River High School, and she will also be serving as a secondary summer school administrator. We have Valerie Smith, dean at Elephants Fork Elementary School, and she will also be serving as an elementary school summer school administrator, elementary summer school administrator. And then finally, we have Mr. Denzel White, who is the dean at Nansman River High School for now. This is your LAP cohort.
Board members, I hear somebody saying yay Lawrence already, so, board members, would you like to make some comments officially?
Hello, I just want to say congratulations, and I'm very, very proud, and this is what makes, your example of what makes Suffolk Public School the best SPS. Thank you, and keep going.
Well, Member Mayo?
I'd like to congratulate you on completing the program, and we're looking at aspiring principals. And thank you for your interest and for your hard work and your dedication, and this is what it's all about.
Congratulations to you all. I want to say thank you for taking the next step in-house to move up the chain and provide excellence through education to our children. I just want to say it means a lot that you all have chose to go through this program, and I look forward to seeing the great things that you're going to do in the near future.
Well, Member Byron.
Yes. Madam Chair, I want to congratulate each of you. I personally know a couple of you and have seen you through the years, and I know you've been dedicated to Suffolk Public Schools. We appreciate your dedication, and as Mr. Riddick said, this is a step in the right direction for us as a school system, to have our own people take this challenge and move forward. And we appreciate each of you and all that you do in our system. Thank you so much.
And lastly, I want to say, thank you, thank you, thank you for all that you've done. Some of you I've worked with, some of you I've watched you at work, and we just want to say thank you for what you're doing and for what you're going to do. We look forward to great things from all of you, and thank you for sticking with us. We appreciate you. Congratulations.
I think there's a special presentation that the LAP participants have. Ms. Pisani, I'm not sure if you want to present your flowers now.
We just wanted to take a moment and thank Dr. Lee and Ms. Pichon for all of their support and advice and wisdom and sense of humor.
All right, thank you. We're going to continue forward with our good news reports. Congratulations are also in order for Nansman River and Lakeland High School for being selected as a 2021-2022 Project Lead the Way distinguished school. There are certain requirements that are needed to be met for an elementary, middle, or high school to be a designated PLTW distinguished school. Lakeland's biomedical sciences program and Nansman River's engineering program are two of 191 Project Lead the Way high school programs across the country to receive this recognition this year. And Lakeland is being recognized for the fifth year as a Project Lead the Way school for its biomedical sciences program. Our College and Career Academy at Prudential showcased student talent during their culinary arts performance-based end-of-the-year luncheon. This event highlighted the benefits of combining experimental learning with 21st century workplace readiness skills. Students transformed their venue from a classroom into a fine dining restaurant environment. Our students had the chance to cook a cuisine with world-renowned chef Malcolm Mitchell, and their menu consisted of scallops, braised lamb, aged New York strip, garlic potatoes, honey glazed carrots, brioche bread pudding, and goat cheese ice cream. It sounds good, and it tasted even better. We do have a video recap of the event that we'd like to share with the board this evening.
You guys start marinating the lamb. My name is Maya Collins. I am the culinary arts instructor here at the College and Career Academy at Prudential. I'm super excited. My students are actually going to be working with Chef Malcolm Mitchell. We have to make the dimmies today. We're going to be cooking a four-course meal for about 36 people. Working with the Kokori app, catered to the course, and our course is culinary arts, incorporates some different skills that we are able to build within my class, but through an app. And with Chef Mitchell, he got to pre-write the things that were on the app.
That true on-the-job training, and I'm here to help Chef Maya put a meal together, doing catering, pass hors d'oeuvres, the whole nine. My name is Malcolm Mitchell, originally from New York, currently the corporate food and beverage director for Donco Hospitality that's based out of Washington, D.C. I oversee 18 restaurants, doing consulting, developing concepts, and owning a few of my own restaurants.
I really love bringing chefs in. He can go to different schools if he really wanted to, and he came to our school, and he talked to us, and he showed them his secrets, and they appreciated his time.
I loved it. Me, because I love to eat.
The menu was collaboration. I came up with the concept and some of the recipes. The team here executed all of the recipes.
One of my students was like, Chef, I don't know why, but I'm a little scared. And I was like, what? He's so nice. He's such a nice person. He's like, I don't know, I'm kind of scared. But as soon as he asked him to do something, they were on it.
All the way around, all the way around.
It's like seriousness about him that made you want to be serious a little bit, but then he was just so chill and cool. I liked his style.
I'm really diverse when it comes to my portfolio and jargon of food. My influence of cooking comes from my mother, who's from Charleston, South Carolina, so that gucci, low-country food is where is in my heart, even though I'm French culinary trained. Taste the lamb too, if you guys are that.
They were like, I don't understand how lamb tastes like this, just because he braised it versus just straight roasting it. These little things make it taste completely different. The bread pudding, everybody's still talking about the bread pudding. The cherries versus like anything, having anything in there. It was amazing. They were like, I did not think that the food was going to be this good.
Your mind is only limited by your ingredients. It's like a painter with colors. It is an art. Even if you don't have the colors, you can mix this color and that color and create a whole other color. You can mix all these different ingredients and make a whole different dish. That's what keeps me inspired and keeps me always cooking and keeps me always going to be creative.
Some of the things that they gained from today, how to work as a team to make sure things come out right and together. Timing, are dietary needs met? Who is a vegetarian? How can we get their things out at the same time as a steak? Doing plating.
No rhyme or reason of how I plate, kind of depends on the ingredient and the dish, just like the tomato salad. If I would have took that salad and just tossed it all together in a bowl and put it on a plate, even though it tastes exactly the same, it just wouldn't be presented the right way. The salad's here, I sprinkled the basil, the fig jam, different places, and then the vinaigrette. You could see all the vibrant colors. When I did the steak, it was simpler. It's steak and potatoes, a home-cooked plate that was just elevated a little bit. If it's not Instagram-worthy, take it back in the kitchen.
We had some big people here today, superintendent and his cabinet, all the staff, teachers, and administrators from here at C cap.
I was hoping, even though they were in a school, they didn't think that it was students back there cooking their meal. I wanted them to be transformed that they were in a fine dining restaurant, and they were not in a culinary school. I think we accomplished that.
They all came up afterwards, and they're like, you guys did a great job! And I was like, thank you so much! Like, we were just so excited, and this is going to bring more excitement to the program.
I used to say, skills that pay the bills, and you guys are learning skills. Since COVID, 25% of our industry is gone. The only way to fill those positions is programs like this.
This whole program brought a lot of richness to the class, opportunities.
You can have skills, but if you don't have an opportunity to use your skills, and I can give you that opportunity for me having jobs for these students, it's a pipeline.
All of our presence that we do today, and I'm so proud of you guys. I'm really sad to see my seniors leave. I hope that they take the things that they learned from here and they choose. and they choose a career they want to do for their life.
If you love what you're doing, you never work a day in your life.
Thank you. That was definitely a wonderful experience for our admin team and for our students. And I know that they had a really great time. And the good thing is that Chef Mitchell did tell them that he does have jobs available for all of them, so. All right. We'd also like to extend a congratulations to two winners who participated in the WHRO PBS Kids Writers Contest. Kyla Geramino, she's a first grader from Nansman Parkway Elementary, and she won first place for The Princess and the Potion Maker. And Willow Young, also a first grader from Kilby Shores Elementary, for writing Helping the Earth. Honorable mentions goes to Warren Broswell, second grader from Nansman Parkway, and Kailani Brown, fifth grader from Northern Shores Elementary. This week, our three Suffolk High Schools held their Class of 2022 Senior Nights. And we are proud to announce that from all three of our schools, Nansman River, Lakeland, and Kings Fork, our senior students were awarded a total of over $13 million in scholarships. We've also had several state and regional titles throughout this school year, and we have a few more victories to add under our belts. Congratulations to the Nansman River High School Women's Outdoor Track, who are Class 5B State Champions. Also, congratulations to the Nansman River Girls Softball, who are Class 5 Regional Champions. And congratulations to the All-State Track Team members at Lakeland High School, who are the 4x400-meter relay state champions. Our May Teacher spotlights for this board meeting include Vincent Pasani from Northern Shores Elementary School, Wayne Rao, Judith Flick, and Michelle Byrd, all from Macbin Jr. Elementary, Herbert Emerson from our College and Career Academy at Pruden, John Burkett from Lakeland High School, Carrie Dudley from Creekside Elementary, Carol Payton from Florence Bowser Elementary, and Linda Ellis from John Yates Middle School. Thank you. And that does conclude our good news report this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. And as I transition to the calendar of special events, Madam Chair, Chef Malcolm is such a special person. I met him about a year and a half ago at a conference I attended, and we stayed in touch. And as you can see, he definitely is willing to do whatever it takes for the kids. And Ms. Ward is right. I actually had a conversation with Mr. Skinner today. And we have several of our Culinary Two kids are actually going to go to Washington, DC next fall for some internship hours, some hands-on experience. And he's also been in touch with a couple that are graduating to join his apprentice program. So, that is the real deal for our kids. For our calendar of special events, just a reminder to everyone that graduations for Suffolk Public Schools are on Saturday, June 11th, Nansman River at 9:00 AM, Lakeland High School at 12:30 PM, Kings Fork High School at 4:00 PM. Everyone must have a ticket to enter. There will be a Chartway Arena in Norfolk, Virginia. Our last day of school is Friday, June 17th. As a reminder, all schools and offices are closed for the Juneteenth holiday on June 20th. The first official day of summer is June 21st. Our first day of summer school will be July 5th. And our next school board meeting, Madam Chair, will be July 14th. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, Vice Chair Barrow.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with Dr. Gordon's additional information.
Dr. Gordon.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and Madam Vice Chair. In the personnel report, we had to make one adjustment based on recent interviews that have taken place for administrative hires. Ms. Gardner has uploaded this information. There will be one change in the very last bulleted item. It will be one principal and five assistant principals for approval for this personnel report. As a reminder, this change is being made because the agenda review is done on last Thursday, and we've had interviews since then.
Okay. And I need a second for the motion, and then I'll let you announce the person. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Now, are there questions, concerns, or whatnot? Okay. None? Would you tell us who that? We can do that. Since there are no questions, Madam Clerk, would you call a roll?
Board members, please vote. Board Member Howell? Yes. Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
Vice Chair Byram?
Yes.
Board Chair Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to call to the podium the new principal of John Yates Middle School, Mr. Steve Smith, who has his education major in Cambridge College School Administration of Bachelor of Arts from Campbell University. He has been with us for a while. I'm not going to tell you how old he is, but he's been with us at Oakland, Creekside. Macbin is where he started his administrative career, Creekside to Macbin, Booker T. Washington. Recently, an assistant principal at John F. Kennedy Middle School. Mr. Smith is a veteran here in Suffolk Public Schools. We know he's going to do an outstanding job at John Yates. Mr. Smith, I'll give you an opportunity to address the board and introduce any family members that you may have here in attendance.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. Good evening, Dr. Gordon, Madam Chair, Dr. Brooks Buck, Vice Chair Ms. Bynum, distinguished board members. With me tonight, I have my very supporting wife and family, my wife Tracy, and my daughters Evelyn and Sophia, sitting in the back. Words alone cannot express the gratitude that I have to each of you, Dr. Gordon, and school board members, and Suffolk Public Schools, for having the confidence in me to be able to take this next step in my career, to be able to lead John Yates Middle School. I was over there today and just had a very warm welcome from the staff. And, you know, that's one of my beliefs. It's the people within the building that truly make a school great. And that greatness shines in the academic excellence, the community involvement, and the shareholder, stakeholder support that is found there at John Yates. And that's something that I want to do, is to continue that rich history that John Yates has, the greatness that's found there. And I want to take it to the next level, charging ahead in the next school year with the collaborations within the school, the success of the academics with the students, and the excellence for all. So, again, I just want to thank you all so much for this opportunity that y'all are giving me to be able to lead John Yates Middle School, the students, the staff, and just the community itself. So, thank you again. I greatly appreciate it from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving right along. We have unfinished business. So, we're going to move on to Madam Vice Chair. Ordinance 21/22-39.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept ordinance 21/22-39 and ordinance amending Chapter 4, Article 6, Section 4-6.2, entitled Appointments of Purchase and Manager and Duties of the School Superintendent Purchases by Employees of the Policies of the Suffolk City School Board.
This is a second reading, so it's an action item. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Other questions, board members? This is the second reading. Yes. Board Member Howell?
Just for clarity, what is the motivation behind this change to policy as opposed to what we've had in place for years as a system of checks and balances?
We continue to have a system of checks and balances that has not changed under any circumstances. However, if we, for every time we get ready to make a purchase, we have to meet to approve the purchase. And of course, things go up in price. So, if something comes to, say, $1, $10, $15, $100, $1,000 more than what we've limited the superintendent to, then we have to gather together to meet again. There are limits to what the superintendent can buy. He can't spend $1 million without our permission. He has to stay within the parameters of whatever the budget says he has to stay in. In other words, he couldn't take money for employees and go buy a school bus with it. And he couldn't do this or do that without our consent. But it doesn't give him unlimited range for purchasing anything that we haven't already pre-approved. He can't move without the parameters that are already there. So, it doesn't give him permission to move out of what something is designated for. But it does give him some leeway when it comes to doing what he needs to do in his day-to-day job without calling the full board together to vote on what he needs to do. And sometimes, things do go up when we're not there.
Is that what has been done in the past? As if he's had to get our approval for contract? We've had a special meeting for one contract?
We would have to put it on the agenda for the next board meeting. Yes, we would. But of course, now, if we think about it, now, there have been, since COVID and during COVID, there have been times when we could not get items at the time that they were due, and things have changed. But, Dr. Gordon, I'll let you address those things. I'll let you amend.
Yes, this is the cleaning-up language within the policy. And I will defer to Mr. Waller for clarification on that. This isn't anything new than what we've already done. This actually puts some additional parameters for accountability for anyone who happens to sit in the office of the superintendent. So, Mr. Waller, if there's anything that you want to clarify for the board or to the school community regarding this policy and the adjusted language?
The board first gave to the superintendent the authority to enter into contracts back in October of 2020. What this policy does is that it puts in place some parameters for the superintendent to exercise his authority to enter into contracts. And it's not simply that the superintendent cannot expend more than in the budget, because quite naturally, he couldn't do that anyway. But what it also says is that he can't expend more than in any particular category. So, that is the basic limitation on his spending authority. The other thing is that this is not so unusual as some may think. There are other school divisions within this region that also has the same policy in place. Norfolk, Chesapeake, Newport News, Williamsburg, Ferguson, and York. All of those school divisions have granted to the superintendent the authority to enter into contracts. And it is a way to not interfere with the superintendent's ability to conduct the daily operations of the school division without having to come back to the school board whenever there's a need to purchase something. And again, the limitation is that he can't expend anything outside of a category. And that is a major limitation on his spending authority and on his contracting authority.
So, is this just a change in the language? Is there a particular spending amount, a limit, that we would want to see come back before us? Or is this just wide open, any contract that comes across this desk?
My limit is $100,000, which has been the limit, as Mr. Waller has referenced from October of 2020. So, to answer the second part of your question, Ms. Howell, yes. This is just cleaning up the language to make sure that the policy is updated.
Okay. I appreciate you answering the questions. I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm just trying to understand how this is not rendering authority over to the superintendent, whoever it may be 20 years from now. Because it won't always be Dr. Gordon. It won't always be us on the backside for oversight. And one of the top three things that VSB A drives into your head in new member training are that we are in charge of approving the budget, hiring the superintendent, and developing policy. And so, this, to me, seems like it's removing some aspect of the budget responsibility. And that's just where my concern is, just being completely frank.
Thank you. And asking a question is never a problem. We want to clarify it for the public, especially when someone gets up and attempts to insult us. We are not policy puppets. We understand policy very well. We understand what's to be done with policy, how to write policy. And we also have an attorney over there who explains to us the parameters of policy. So, given that information...
Yes.
I'm sorry.
I have one question.
Let me finish that sentence.
Okay.
Given that information, it's okay to ask a question about it because that is our responsibility. But this is not a change from what we have already approved. Woman Riddick, yes?
Madam Chair, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding it well so when I report back to my constituents, that I'm able to account accurately. When we granted permission for the superintendent to enter into contracts, my memory is kind of fading, but was that because of COVID-19? Or was that for something else? Was that us cleaning up to make it flow smoother? Or was that a part of our COVID-19 mitigations to do business?
No, the change that was made in policy 4-6.2 or 1 was done prior to COVID. So, it had nothing to do with COVID.
Thank you. I know that's one of the questions that I've been receiving from the constituents.
Okay. All questions satisfied? All right. Board members, it's been moved and seconded. Questions have been answered. Are we ready for the vote? Madam Clerk?
Board members, please vote. Board Member Howell?
No.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Epstein.
Board Member Story?
No.
Vice Chair Byram?
Yes.
Board Chair Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Let's move on to the next item.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve ordinance 21/22-40 and ordinance amending Chapter 7, Article 16, Section 7-16, 5.1, entitled Placement on Salary Scale: Credit for Teaching Experience, Credit for Work Experience, Credit for Military Experience, Reserve Military Experience Not Included. Superintendent to develop regulations for the policies of Suffolk City School Board.
Is there a second?
Second the motion.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Other questions? Having none, Madam Clerk?
Board members, please vote. Board Member Howell?
Yes.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
Vice Chair Byram?
Yes.
Board Chair Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Number three, ordinance 21/22-41.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve an ordinance amending Chapter 9, Article 2, Section 9-11.6, entitled Portable Communication Devices permitted use in the classroom, and Superintendent to develop regulations.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance number 21/22-41. Other questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
At the risk of being redundant, I want to ensure that this policy is talking about school-issued devices and not a bring-your-own-device policy.
We already have a bring-your-own-device policy in place, but this is portable communications devices permitted in class, use in the classroom. So, we, kids can bring their own devices.
Right. But when I referred to bring-your-own-device, I was speaking into the context in which this policy is written for usage, not as to whether we would allow them to have those items in their possessions. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding it correctly. I apologize. I've come from work, and I don't have all my notes with me. So, that's why you see me using my cellphone as my computer. But I just want to make sure that we're not opening a Pandora's Box, because I've seen this work and backfire in other places.
Okay. Dr. Gordon, would you like to further explain?
Yes. Mr. Riddick, to clarify, we do want to make sure that everyone is clear that we are, like all of our students, to be able to use our SPS-issued Chromebooks. I think that was the first part of your question. And we also do know that there are certain apps that teachers have used, not only on the Chromebooks, but on students' cellphones. So, we want to make sure that what we already have in common practice from when we changed over to our SPS Connect program, that our policy actually reflects that. And so, again, this is more changes to the policy to clean up the language. this is more changes to the policy to clean up the language based on current practice. We do not want students to bring their own device. We would prefer for them to have S P S Chromebooks because of the filtering system and also the technology support coming from Mr. Littlefield.
Madam Chair, if I may also add on to one of the comments just made by Dr. Gordon, the policy also indicates that whether a device is appropriate to connect to Suffolk Public Schools network will be made by Suffolk Public Schools Technology Department, and the decision will be final. So if someone brings their own device, whether or not it can be used or not, is going to be left up to the Technology Department to make that determination.
So whether they can connect to our system?
Correct.
Was that your question?
Correct.
Mr. Riddick, was that your question?
That wasn't my question. What led into my question was from the aspect of safety, and especially in the climate we're in now, where if students are allowed to bring in some of these additional devices, how can we really go about, for the lack of better terms, governing whether their, like if a fight break out, are you recording and you sharing on social media and all of those things? I just wanted to make sure that we're not opening Pandora's Box. This is one of the things that came up in my Citizens Roundtable when we were discussing some of these. So I just wanted to ensure that my understanding is clear.
So are we talking about cellphones? Or are we talking about what other kinds of devices? Are you just talking about students and cellphones?
Well, with technology in general, they have multiuses now. It can be a laptop that can be flipped and used as something else. It can be a watch that can be used as something else. It can be eyeglasses that can be, have a camera into it. They even got ink pens that's a cellphone with cameras in it now. So it's a lot of different gadgets that are out here that can be manipulated, misconstrued. And if it's a student's personal property or staff personal property, I believe it poses a risk for us far as safety. Like, how do you confiscate that device to remove explicit content such as a fight or those things from it? This is, this is what I mean, but I believe it's a prelude to opening Pandora's Box. If we're going to do a one-to-one initiative, maybe we need to scrap this, and you're going to use what the divisions say we have, because you have more control and more governance versus that. I don't know if that's another thing that we have to refer back to the policy review, but this is what came up in my Citizens Roundtable.
Dr. Gordon.
Madam Chair.
Please.
In the policy, it's actually listed to some of the inquiries that Mr. Riddick has described, cellphones, smartphones, tablets, e-readers, smartwatches, and laptops. This is an update. Previously, the policy mentioned things such as walkie-talkies as an example. So we wanted to make sure that as the technology changes, that the policy actually protects the school, the staff members, well as the student against some of those items that you had mentioned. And as you know, Mr. Riddick, we would discuss, once students are potentially using those, that is actually a violation. They're not using them appropriately. That's a violation of the code of conduct. So we know that when it comes to student smartwatches, for example, that's, has at times not been included in the policy. So we wanted to provide more details for that, just to ensure that it also would be included in student code of conduct. And then we will also, as it says in the recommendation, adjust our regulations, working with the Coordinator of Student Services, to ensure that we actually have a discipline matrix attached to that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Wait a minute, Mrs. Storey.
Oh, okay, sorry.
You hit your hand raise, and then I'll call on you. You hit your hand raise. Did he cover? Okay. Ms. Howell?
I'm looking just at part B on the attachment, and my understanding is if it's underlined, that's where a change or an addition has occurred. So how does this look logistically? Whether a device is appropriate or not will be determined by the Technology Department? What does that, what does that look like? I mean, are we talking about individual students? Or how is technology involved in determining if a device is appropriate?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
That is only when it comes to instruction. That's part of the policy where Mr. Waller was referring to. We were talking about the decision from the Technology Department would be final for instruction. And we do know that we have situations where students that have individual education plans, there may have to be some assistive technology there. That'll be something that'll be approved and worked through the Technology Department. We're saying that we don't want students to be able to pull out anything to use in the instructional classroom. We want to be able to provide some examples of that.
Okay. So just to be clear, then, we are allowing personal devices, but technology is only approving school-issued or assistive technology devices for instructional purposes?
That is correct. The only device that we have issued to students is our S P S Chromebooks. That is the main device that we want to be able to use for instruction. Now, we do know that there has been situations where there have been some mobile apps that teachers have requested through their principal, that then is reviewed by the Technology Department to see if that also can be used for instruction. That's a rarity, doesn't happen a lot, but those are some of the discussions that we've had. So just to be clear to the board once again, we are modernizing the list of technology devices that were listed in this policy. That is literally the main cleanup that's occurring here.
I understand that. And I'm from the old school, the lines that are blacked out, the pagers and walkie-talkies era, and they were never used for instructional purposes. And so I'm just concerned, like Mr. Riddick, if we're issuing Chromebooks, why they need a personal device from home for instructional purposes if they're issued a Chromebook?
Let me say something. When we started out 10 years ago, I believe it was, and I see, I spoke to them on the way in, some Kings Fork faculty, because I think that was, Dr. Rice was principal then, when we first started with phones in the classroom. We did a survey, and there was a national survey, about the biggest abusers of the phone business in the schools. And it was parents calling their kids in school. The biggest receipt, receiver of the, doers of the calling, initiators of the calling, and the use of the phones were parents calling their children in school. Okay? So trying to stop and reduce discipline and the problems that we received, and of course, with things that go on at schools now. Kids do have phones in school. Okay? So what we're using for instruction, yes, we're trying to use the Chromebooks for instruction, and teachers, and of course, the superintendent, and the instructional people can give you more information than I can give you. But as we updated the policies, as Dr. Gordon has already said, we tried to make it more updated and include those things that people are using now, Apple Watches and those kinds of things that we did not have before. Before, when we first wrote this stuff down and tried to include it, we were talking about having your own personal phone. And now phones look so much different and do all sorts of different things. And I was sharing with Dr. Gordon, I didn't know what my Fitbit could do. I didn't know until I started looking down and seeing email things on it. So there are things that we are learning day by day with technology and what it does and what it can do and what you can get and so on and so forth. But we're updating it as we go along. So there are things that people are using, and people know how to use, and new things that are coming every day that people are using. And so we'll have to move along with it. But we're trying to do our best. And so as teachers learn how to use it, and there are new things that kids can learn with and teachers will learn with, we might be able to use some of those things, and we might be able to get some things on our Chromebook, Chromebooks that we can use. Some of the things that come on the Chromebook, I do better with my iPad than I do with my Chromebook, and that's just me. But, but it happens. So I don't know.
So just to be clear, since I go first, I vote first, we're not actually changing anything that occurs day-to-day. We're just describing it differently in the policy manual.
Yes.
So we're not being more permissive?
No.
And allowing things to slide a little easier?
No.
Okay. Thank you for the clarity and the patience.
Not a problem. This is where we try to clear it up anyway. Are there other questions?
Okay. I believe it's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk?
Board members, please vote. Board Member Howell?
Yes.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
Vice Chair Byram?
Yes.
Board Chair Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Number four, ordinance 21/22-42.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve an ordinance amending chapter nine, article 20, section nine, dash 20, eleven-point-one, prescription medication, non-prescription medication, self-administration of medication, sharing, borrowing of medication prohibited, self-administration of asthma medication and auto-injectable Ephedrine, school nurse training and administration of Ephedrine, and superintendent to develop regulations of the policies.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we adopt this policy. Board members, are there questions? Madam Clerk, would you read?
Board members, please vote. Board Member Howell?
Yes.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
Vice Chair Byram?
Yes.
Board Chair Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Number five, ordinance 21/22-43.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve an ordinance amending chapter 10, article three, section 10, dash 3-point-5, entitled Virginia Freedom of Information Act, not required to create a public record, penalties for altering or destroying public records, school four-year officer, and training required.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there questions?
I'm sorry, who seconded that? I heard two. Okay, Mayo.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there questions? All right, Madam Clerk?
Board members, please vote. Board Member Howell?
Yes.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
Vice Chair Byram?
Yes.
Board Chair Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right. We have moving on, new business. We have a resolution of the school board. And that resolution has to do with the city of Suffolk granting the school superintendent, the school superintendent, the authority to obligate through encumbrance contracting any remaining appropriated funds before the end of the current fiscal year. And I believe this is connected with the city not allowing us to do as the auditors recommended. Would you like to give us some information and comments?
This was actually a part of a discussion, Madam Chair, from the Finance Committee. This is an accounting purpose because we know that many things ordered this time of year actually will go over for two fiscal years. So as a part of the resolution, we are looking to use this money for 10 buses, 70-seventy passenger with A C, 12 vans, seven trucks, and six vehicles, fuel tank installation at Florence Bowser Elementary School, professional painting at Creekside Elementary School, and Kings Fork Middle School, sewage pump station enhancement Parkway Elementary School, restroom partition replacements at Lakeland Annancement River, fire lane and parking lot painting at all schools, replacement of six-year-old copies at various schools, hot water system valve replacements, sinkhole repairs that we've discussed a lot, furniture replacement, student desks, playground replacements at Macbin Jr. and Oakna Elementary School, camera scope and drainage field at Kings Fork High School to determine the remaining repairs needed there, various repairs at parking lots, and Virginia Preschool Initiative playground replacement at several schools. Just wanted to identify that for the board and the school community.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve resolution 21 dash 22 dash 21.
Is there a second?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve resolution 21 dash slash 22 dash 21. Other questions? Yes. Board Member Riddick, and then Board Member Story.
Okay, Madam Chair, I see in the description it says six non-CDL buses. And for, I remember when we brought this up, we were talking about use those for McKinney Vento buses. Are these the activity light buses, or are these the buses with the lights that can be used for picking up and dropping off of students?
It's going to be both, Mr. Riddick. The plan is to use these buses so that we can free up some of our drivers. McKinney Vento is a group we're taking a look at also for athletic runs for some of our smaller teams and any small field trips. One of the things that, from the feedback that we received from the board, was to try to find ways to make our transportation department as efficient as possible. In our discussions with Mr. Privet, with Ms. Forzeman and Dr. Brown kind of leading the discussion, we're determined that once we receive these buses, and it's going to take some time, because of the backlog, we're going to leave at least one of these buses at each school. So we want to go to Transportation Department to get them. The other three will be at Transportation so that any time there's a driver for any substitute purposes will be coming back from the run. They can pick up the bus there and start their run.
Okay. The reason why I ask, because when speaking regarding to transportation, you often see the small little white buses like Chesapeake has or Norfolk, but you can't use those buses for pickup and dropping off of students if they don't come with the crossarm and the lights on top. So I just want to be sure that what we're purchasing is something that we can utilize both ways versus getting a white bus for athletic purposes and field trips. But if you're short with your IB program, any regular staff person can't jump in it and legally drop off students. So that's something that I, you know, I can't, that's something that I have a little reservation about, that whatever we're purchasing in regards to transportation, that is something that can be used in dropping off students as well as for other purposes.
Thank you. Did you want to speak to that as well?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. They're all yellow buses. They will be used for, with drivers who don't have to have a CDL, they just have to have an S endorsement.
Thank you. Stay put just in case other people have questions. Could you stay right there? Board Member Story?
Yes. Madam Chair, can you define for me what is an encumbrance contract? Madam Chair?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Okay.
What's an encumbrance contract?
Encumbrance means that we write it down now, order it now, and when it comes, you can, because you can hold the money. What we, what we asked for was to be allowed to have an escrow account. The city would not allow us to do that. So what we do is order it now and have the money to pay for it now. But if it doesn't come now, we have the money already designated. It's already a bill, there's already an order for it, and the money has already been designated to pay for that thing. So when it comes, we have the money to pay for it because we've ordered it, and we get to keep the money to pay for it because we've ordered it in advance. That's what that means.
So I understand encumbrance. What is encumbrance contracting?
Well, we have to have them under contract in order to use them. Most of these items are much larger than $50,000. And so you have to have a contract under the Virginia Procurement Act. So we would have a contract in place. We would be either using a cooperative agreement contract, or we'd have our own contract that we had gone out for RFP for. So these are obligated funds. They may not be used for any other vendor or any other purpose than what we encumber them for. So you are making a contract with a vendor, in the case of the buses, to purchase those buses, and you may not change the vendor, you may not change what you're purchasing. You have to purchase those things. So that is an encumbrance contract. You are contracted for those items only. If you do not use it for those items under that, for that vendor, you must return it to the city.
So do we have these contracts in place? Will we have them in place by June 30th? And guaranteed for delivery next year?
Most of them are guaranteed for delivery next year, yes, ma'am.
You have other questions? Anyone have other questions? Thank you. Okay. Board members. Madam Clerk?
Board members, please vote. Board Member Howell?
Yes.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
No.
Vice Chair Byram?
Yes.
Board Chair Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Number two, resolution 21/22-24.
Madam Chair, I recommend that we approve a resolution of the school board for the city of Suffolk, approving an award to McGraw-Hill to provide textbooks pre-K through five pursuant to a request for proposals issued by Suffolk Public Schools and Benchmark Scholastic Education, Learning Without Tears, and Collaborative Learning.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Are there questions? Madam Clerk?
Board members, please vote. Board Member Howell?
Yes.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Yes.
Board Member Story?
No.
Vice Chair Byram?
Yes.
Board Chair Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Technology repair fees, number three. Madam Vice Chair.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the technology repair fee, fees as outlined.
Is there a second? Madam Chair, I second the motion. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the technology repair fees as outlined. Are there questions? Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Board members, please vote. Board Member Howell?
Yes.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
May I ask a question?
Not now. In the middle of the vote. I'm sorry, but no, not at this time.
I'll ask it after the vote. No.
Vice Chair Byram?
Yes.
Board Chair Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Now may I ask a question, please?
Actually, it's not time to ask a question. But you know what? I'll, what's your question, Stowe?
Is there any penalty? Is there any consequence? We make these fees, but is there a consequence to students not paying?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Students have a debt record, Ms. Story. We can't use that to prevent a student from graduating, but we can use that to prevent them from doing other things. One of the focuses that we wanted to really explain here was to try to make this affordable while also making sure that students had some skin in the game, staff as well. So this would be just like owing uniforms or any other equipment associated with a student's instructional day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. At this point, we're going to do this one more time, and we're gonna ask all speakers who come forward. It's time for public speakers on non-agenda items. We're gonna ask all speakers to listen very carefully to what the clerk reads. If it says, "Do not use terms that are considered insults", we ask you not to call names. We are adults here who are coming forward to speak. So we ask you not to insult people. It is not necessary. We'll address that later. And as I call your name after the clerk has read the statement that she will read, we ask you, please abide by those rules. People are offended when they're asked to stop speaking or when they have to be physically removed. But we ask you to abide by rules that are rules that are used in civil societies by people who are adults. You have a time limit that we ask you to obey, and we ask you to be polite and to remember that we are civil to one another. Madam Clerk, would you read the statement?
"It is the intent of the school board to ensure that the affairs of the board be conducted in an open and orderly manner, that all persons desiring to address the board are afforded an opportunity to do so in the order in which they signed up to speak, that persons and, that persons in attendance may observe and hear the proceedings of the board without distraction, and that members of the board and board employees are able to transact the business of the board with minimal disruption. Any person addressing the board shall, one, confine their comments to matters germane to the business of the school board of the City of Suffolk; two, refrain from words or statements which from their usual construction and common acceptance are construed as insults and tend to incite violence or breach of the peace; three, refrain from obscenity, vulgarity, or other breach of respect; four, comply with the time limit for public, public comment as set by the board, which can be up to five minutes, unless the board through the exercise of its discretion decides to allow less than five minutes for public comment; five, refrain from cumulative or repetitive remarks; and six, refrain from making any comment regarding any pending student discipline or employee grievance matters. The appropriate form for such matters is the applicable administrative hearing provided by state law or where appropriate court proceeding. Expressive activities including, but not limited to, petitioning, picketing, displaying signs or posters, solicitation, demonstrating, pamphlet distribution, and conducting polls shall not be permitted in the waiting areas and corridors of any of the school, of any school building in which the board is meeting. Persons addressing the board may deliver to the board or its clerk written materials, including reports, statements, exhibits, letters, or signed petitions, and may also make use of, of any chart or graph during their verbal presentation. The school board welcomes comments from the public as appropriate. Board members will listen to public comment but will not comment, deliberate, or take action on them. The school board chair may direct the superintendent to investigate items and report back to the school board at a subsequent meeting. The chair or other presiding officer shall preserve decorum and shall decide all questions of public order subject to the, to appeal to the board. At the request of the chairman or superintendent, a city police officer shall act as, act as sergeant-at-arms at tonight's board meeting. The officer shall, under the direction of the chairman, superintendent, or other presiding officer, have charge of the auditorium, the waiting areas and corridor, corridors adjacent thereto, and shall prevent disorder or interruption of the business of the board. Please state your name and address before speaking.
Our first speaker this evening is Carl Jackson, who'll speak, "Do not censor or ban school books." Mr. Jackson?
Hi. Good evening, members of the school board. Dr. Gordon, appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'm the proud father of two daughters, a middle school daughter who has made straight A's the entire year, and a high school daughter who was recently inducted into the National Honor Society. Very proud of my children, and my children also have values. Okay, they know what books are appropriate and what books are inappropriate. I never have to worry about that. That's why I come before you, to echo some of the concerns expressed by our former mayor and others. There's a hysteria of book banning, censorship, of essential materials that are important for school. I ask you not to do this. There are people out there that are labeling black history, that are labeling anything regarding race relations as divisive. But we have to be honest with ourselves. The history of America is complicated and sometimes divisive, and our students need to know that. Look at segregation. I wanna make sure that segregation remains history, you know, so that it's taught in our class, taught in classes, so that students realize the difference between how, what's right and wrong, how students used to be treated and how they should be treated today. We have politicians out there who are attacking the transgender community, that are banning books, you know, you know, from that community that are trying to censor any discussion of people who are different. Well, I come to tell you that my daughter has a teacher who is transgendered. And because of that, she has learned greater acceptance and tolerance. And that's what's important. I tell parents out there not to let politicians raise their children. These are values that you need to teach them at home. The school is a place for challenging people's minds and expressing ideas. So please, allow educators to do their job. And as a parent, I'll do mine. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sean Bernard, Barnard.
Barnard.
Barnard, and administrative position placement.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, school board. Good evening, Dr. Gordon. My name is Sean Barnard, and I am the IB specialist at Kings Fork High School. And I'm here today on my own behalf and on the behalf of several of my peers, some of which are here tonight, and some of which have called, have emailed. And basically, this is why we are here. There's only one thing that gets around a school division quicker than a wildfire in the hottest months, and that is talk of job movement and security for the upcoming school year. As we near the final week of the 2021-2022 school year, the chatter has become louder and more frequent. The most shocking of the chatter was to learn that Ms. Elke Boone would be moved from her post as assistant principal at KFHS in a lateral move to Lakeland High School. I am completing my second year in SPS and can honestly say that this woman has been my bedrock and a bedrock for IB and the other department she oversees. She is stoic, she is intelligent, she is logical, she is patient, she is kind, she is assertive, she follows the rules, she embodies integrity, she is a veteran educator, she is an instructional leader, she is everything that a building needs in a leadership position in order to function at an op, at an optimum level. She is a mainstay at Kings Fork High School and has been since the doors opened in 2004. She was the first Kings Fork Teacher of the Year. She has worked her way up and selflessly given her all to the students, the teaching staff, custodial staff, administration, administrative staff, you name it, at KFHS. She can likely see the finish line on this journey that has been a successful career in education and retirement. Ms. Boone does it all. She develops a master schedule like no other. She organizes many of our large-scale events for students and families. She chaperones trips and doesn't even think to put an out-of-office sender on. I caught her amending the master schedule just this Monday at the senior picnic on her chromebook in the middle of a hot park with her cell phone hotspot on. Not to worry, she's still got her line dances in with the seniors. She upholds the rules and enforces them daily. She comes from the old school of leadership, where accountability and feedback are vital. Those of us who work with her daily are lucky to have her as a key asset for the support that we so desperately need in a time where education is anything but what we signed up for. I'm asking you all to really reflect on whether or not all decisions, placements, and initiatives being foreshadowed or put into place are in the best interest of students and faculty. In other words, are we robbing one facility resulting in that facility's detriment in order to enhance another facility? And is this change equal, fair, and equitable? This has been a hard year for all of us across the country, but I will tell you that many of the veteran teachers have stated that this has been the worst it has ever been here. I'm willing to accept that some of this deals with post-pandemic circumstances and changes in community and society as a whole, but I'm also confident that this deals with the lack of leadership and decision-making occurring within. Many concerns do not seem to hold the same weight among students, teachers, and administration. It has felt like an uphill battle to gain control and combat the disrespect and apathy as it pertains to learning. Maybe it's because Ms. Boone is my office neighbor, so I see and hear her presence and leadership daily. But I can tell you that not a day goes by where she isn't trying to uphold the vision and mission of our school and this district, and without proper recognition, that I feel I must inform you of the complete disappointment and confusion that I feel over this. If you were telling me that Ms. Boone was being moved for a promotion in her own building, I wouldn't feel right coming here tonight to fight against this. She is the most, she is most deserving of such a promotion, has put in the time, effort, and has miles of brain power in her head that any building would benefit from. But that is not what is happening. You are taking our most experienced leader out of a building that needs her while making a lateral move to a building who you've just awarded another administrator, administrator to leave. I know Ms. Boone well enough to know that she is the queen of the high road and will likely stoically do as directed. But I wanna go on record that this is a true detriment to Kings Fork High School and its stakeholders. I wish for you to consider the implications of this and think long and hard as to whether this is the message you want to send to the Kings Fork family. And lastly, thank you, Ms. Boone, for everything you've done for me, the IB program, our students, and the staff. You are one of the good ones. We see you and we appreciate you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Nicole Sperry. And she'll speak to information received via FOIA regarding Teresa.
Nicole Sperry, but before I begin, I did let Ms. Gardner know that I had copies of the FOIA report. She asked me to print them for you. So I don't know if you want them now or after.
She's gonna come and get them.
The last time I was here, I mentioned not receiving the information from the investigation until the day's prior to Teresa contracting COVID and dying five days later. You're welcome. I wonder why we were not presented with the findings of SPS's own free will? Why did we have to wait to receive it by sending any FOIA request? We received and noticed inconsistencies immediately, and information was not included, which should have been. Let me begin. My list does not include all of the issues that we have noticed. First, why does the very minimal investigation report list three separate times? But only one was reported to the pilot. The one that was reported to the pilot was a student that hurt his foot on the playground. We knew about that one because Teresa told us that not only one, but two boys hurt themselves on the playground that day. One of them had to go home. She had to get his book bag and take it back to the nurse. In the FOIA requested report, her teacher said that the only time she remembered sending Teresa was with one hurt student from the playground. But here is where my first issue is. The nurse said that the only time that Teresa came down was with a student that hurt their arm in a classroom. Neither of these stories help the other. Why does the teacher and the nurse have two different stories of the only time that she came to the nurse's office within weeks of the new school year? With two different injuries that happened in two different locations? The nurse also shared that Teresa walked the same student to get their inhaler. She included the date of the inhaler, but not the date that the student hurt their arm. I wonder if the person that told the pilot it only happened once was privy to the investigation materials. And if not, I wonder who gave that person the information to share with the pilot? Why were the teacher and the nurses the only ones interviewed by Principal Taylor to confirm that Teresa didn't walk six students to the nurse? The security that sits by the front desk? The front office area? The secretary? The bookkeeper? The bookkeeper who has a window that faces the door? Why not any of the TAs that help in the office throughout the day? Third, they included a snippet of the email between the teacher and Principal Taylor. Why didn't they provide us with the full emails? Instead of just a quote? There was also a mention of Principal Taylor There was also a mention of Principal Taylor contacting Ms. P. Shawn the same night Teresa passed away, but it did not say how she was contacted. Was it phone or a text? Fourth, we were given access to, we were not given access to the video because they said that Teresa didn't walk six students with COVID or COVID-like symptoms. Did Principal Taylor review the video? Fifth, why weren't her classmates asked if she walked any of them to the nurse or if they were asked if they wanted her to walk them down? Are you afraid to find out the truth? Six, why did the nurse make it a point to say that Teresa didn't wait in the nurse's office, but waited outside in the main office adjacent to the nurse's office? If we had the financial means, we would have hired a private investigator. I am tired of waiting for the truth to come out. If this happened to your child or grandchild, you want the school system that you've poured countless hours into to give you the truth. If you were in my shoes, you wouldn't rest until the truth came out. One final thought, I'm heartbroken to know that her friends are preparing for their promotion ceremony, but an offer hasn't been extended for us to come and honor our daughter. If you need to reach us, you know where we are. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sperry. The next speaker is Jennifer Hergit.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Jennifer Hergit, 146 Cardinal Lane. I just want to make sure everyone received my email. I have two of the attachments I printed here as well. I'm a mother and a grandmother. Is anyone here aware of the Pfizer documents for the COVID-19 vaccine? I've personally spoken with five doctors, and they were unaware. The FDA tried to have the documents sealed for 75 years until 2096. A Texas judge ordered the release, and the first set came out on March 1st. I've read some of the first 55,000 pages, and I'm following the doctors that are going through the documents. I'm a strong supporter of informed consent. There are nine pages of adverse reactions that were known by February 28, 2021, over a year ago. Within these nine pages, there are approximately 40 autoimmune diseases. Should your immune system be compromised, your body can't protect itself properly. Has anyone here heard about the hepatitis outbreak in children? Six different types of hepatitis are listed in these nine pages, but the doctors have not been informed of these papers. Not being talked about is shingles, also called herpes zoster. I know of five people that have gotten shingles. Two of them are in their twenties, and doctors still said it was because of stress, but they have not been informed of these documents. This normally occurs in people over the age of 50, maybe a weakened immune system. There are over 50 types of herpes in these nine pages. My hope is that parents have informed consent prior to vaccinating their children or any family member. To find these adverse events in the Pfizer documents, go to PHMPT.org, click on the Pfizer documents, put in the search bar 5.3.6 for the adverse reactions, go to page 30.
Ms. Hergit.
Yes.
I'm sorry. We don't, you cannot advertise for some website in here now. If you have some information about schools and the other part is health information, it's not something we, we have to share here unless you are a physician or someone who can give us information on children or something related to Suffolk Public Schools, that this is not the forum for that. So please don't share a web address for people to follow because we're not, that's not what we're here for. If you have an issue for some, that's pertinent to Suffolk Public Schools, we aren't forcing parents to take a shot or any other kind of shot of Pfizer or any other kind of shot. You need to understand that as you speak, okay?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, my, my only concern is informed consent for parents.
Right, but we don't, we don't pass out any information, recommend any shots or not any shots to anybody, parents.
Absolutely.
That's parental choice.
Absolutely. I agree completely. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Amber Snodgrass, given the superintendent power to enter contract without school board oversight.
Hello there. My name is Amber Snodgrass, and I live at 3617 Deerfield Drive. It's an honor to address you all. Hello, board members. I just want to say I really enjoyed the discussion tonight. Thank you for all of the questions and the things that, the issues that have been raised. It's been really interesting, and it's a, a nice change to the meetings. It's been wonderful, so thank you. And I especially appreciate Board Member Riddick and Board Member Howell's questions concerning this issue. I'm a little, I know that the decision has been made. I just wanted to comment. I know in 2020, you gave power to the superintendent to enter into contracts, and in my opinion, rather than make it a cleaner thing, we ought to take that power back to the school board. Streamlining is a good goal, however, we don't want to streamline out responsibilities that belong to the board that we, as the public, have entrusted you with. I'm in favor of more oversight, even if it's just a matter of routine. And so to that, like, are your purchases not planned out more than a month ahead in order to put them on the agenda, especially if you're spending $100,000? My concern is that, that this policy moves purchases more behind closed doors, and it pulls decision-making back behind closed doors where it's, it's good for us to be able to see these decisions happen and the discussions happen. I really appreciate that. So just because other schools do it doesn't make it a good decision for us as the city of Suffolk. In my opinion, this is an abdication of the school board's authority. It's a removal of oversight, and it's sort of closing the window where this is the forum that the public gets to see how the schools operate, and it's making that window just a little bit smaller. So I just wanted to bring those concerns to you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And just for clarification, Ms. Snodgrass, every purchase that we make, unlike other school systems, is given to the public every month. Every dime that we spend is in your board packet, even down to if we buy pencils, down to $8 and some cents is in your board packet. All you have to do is look online. We give that information to the public every month, so the superintendent doesn't buy anything that we're not aware of. So I want you to be aware of that and anybody else in the public, because I know that sometimes that information gets passed around erroneously, and, and misinformation goes a long way. But that information is in the board packet and available to every citizen who gets an agenda. All you have to do is look online. It's available to the public. Thank you. Our last speaker is Mrs. Ebony Wright, read gratitude. Thank you, Ms. Wright.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, and Superintendent Gordon. I'm here tonight to speak about gratitude. The definition of gratitude is the quality of being thankful and readiness to show appreciation for and to return kindness. Board members, thank you for serving on this board. The work that you do is very important. Month after month, I watch as you listen to parents voice their concerns and criticisms while you continue to establish and carry out the vision for Suffolk Public Schools and set standards and the performance of our schools and, for the performance of our schools and the superintendent. Please know that your work does not go unnoticed. You are appreciated. You all add value through your work and life experiences. You may not always see eye to eye, but stay focused on the vision for our schools. Handle disagreements amicably, and don't allow the rough seasons to define you. Opposition will come from many directions and sometimes from within, but don't get discouraged. Press towards the mark, which in this case is building the best SPS. Although at times it may seem that those that walk with you may sometimes be against you, please know that you aren't an exception to deception and hidden agendas. Remember that Judas walked with Christ, and his actions were necessary for the finished work on the cross. So don't be dismayed when deception comes from within. Many of you have had many fiery darts thrown your way this school year, some more than others. I know that you all may already know this, but God has the final say, and He has spoken. So continue to hold your heads up, hold your peace, and allow Him to fight your battles. Superintendent Gordon, there is no question that you are highly qualified, personable, and you listen to the concerns of students, parents, and teachers. Thank you for taking action to put in place additional time for planning for teachers. Thank you for finding additional ways to show appreciation to the teachers and staff through the family day out at the zoo. Thank you for the bonuses you gave employees and the recent gift bags and letter of gratitude. To sum, your efforts will never be enough, but don't allow the critics to hinder your spirit. You, sir, are appreciated. Teachers and administrators, there are not enough words to express how you are appreciated. If I could authorize it, I would make one of, I would make your, your profession one of the highest paid in this country. You impact virtually every aspect of our students' lives, teaching them the important lessons that will help them succeed far beyond standardized tests. Thank you for all that you do. I hope that you get well-deserved rest and relaxation throughout the summer. Parents, as the school year comes to an end, my sincere hope is that we end it with a spirit of gratitude. Although things may not be perfect, they are a work in progress. We must work together with our schools to get the results we desire. While there, while there may be valid reasons to complain, we have a lot to be grateful for. Our children are watching, and we all need to lead by example and with gratitude. I close with this familiar passage of Scripture, Philippians 4 and 8. Finally, brothers and sisters, whatsoever things are true, whatsoever things are honest, whatsoever things are just, whatsoever things are pure, whatsoever things are lovely, whatsoever things are of good report, if there be any virtue, and if there be any praise, think on these things. Thank you. Enjoy your summer.
At this time, we have comments by the board, but I want to do something special. Ms. Jenkins, would you join me for something? We have to do that's pretty special. During the year, Dr. Gordon, you and I have spent some time together in some very strange We spent a lot of time in the courtroom for stuff, being charged with things we didn't do, and we spent time on people's pages with stuff that people saying very ugly things about us, quite frankly. Being ugly, just because they like being ugly, I guess. However, we have something that we decided we wanted to do, so we have something for you.
Oh.
Stand up. Somehow, you always manage to be all over the place all the time. We don't know why I get calls from you all over the time. Is this the right fact? Yes, yes. We have something for you. Okay, yes, we do. We have something for you. You get to be super daddy. You get to be Superman. You get to be all sorts of stuff. So somebody decided that we have you dressed appropriate for the, appropriately for the job that you do.
Okay.
So we brought you something special.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. A little super and a little hair. Thank you so much.
Now, you must wear this.
I will.
All right. You must wear this, probably on convocation day. Okay, I think it's a good thing, but we got your plaque.
After that, you get a picture of that? You gotta get a picture of that. That is amazing.
Isn't that pretty?
Wow.
Come over here. That's, that's the base for it.
Stand for it? No, I'm gonna put it on the wall.
No, that's the stand for it. You got a picture of?
You'll come up closer?
Come on. You probably need to come up here, you think?
I should get to him in.
Okay. Can you use this one here?
Got it? You good? Thank you all.
You are most welcome. We just want you to know when people say mean things, it's all right, okay? They have nothing else to do.
Appreciate it.
And you'll get over it, but this is what we think of you.
I'll take a picture with it, I promise.
Okay.
That's nice.
All right?
Yeah. Appreciate it.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, at this point, we are going to have comments from board members. All righty, I usually start at this end. Let me start at this end.
Good evening, everyone. It is a great day to be alive.
Yes, it is.
Yes, life is hitting us with so many curveballs, and we got to learn to take the small victories. Those things we take for granted. Love on each other while you have them. I know it's not for me to preach, but I just want to tell you that because sometimes we forget to do it. But it's a blessing and an honor and a privilege to continue to serve the members of the Suffolk Borough, working with the constituents that have been elected to serve, having citizens round tables discussing a lot of key things that I believe are instrumental into the growth of our division. I also want to share my sentiments regarding the stance that some are taking, and I, I thank you for doing so. And at the end of the day, we are in this thing together, and sometimes we miss what goes on in the trenches because we're not there. And that is not to slight anyone. I do not want my words to be misconstrued. I'm not sliding, shading, salting, dissing, sneak disking anyone, but it's a different, did it get darker? It's a different, okay, I want to make sure I won't lose it, but it's a different feel when you are in the muck and in the mire, when you are on ground level dealing with the students and implementing the policies that we put into place. And I just want to say thank you. It's not easy doing what you're doing in this climate, this unforeseen climate. You know, everybody is adapting, everybody is maneuvering, and we have some people who feel they have all the answers to everything, and that's the biggest misstatement. No one has all of the answers, but I can tell you this. If you come with a solution to your identified problem, we will be one solution closer to achieving a greater SPS. We are in this thing together. Whether you like the person sitting beside you, standing beside you or not, whether you voted for me or not, I'm still elected to represent my borough, but when I vote, it impacts all of Suffolk. And you all, we have to be more, we have to be more purposeful with our actions. Oftentimes, we just react, and we can't keep allowing people's actions to dictate our reactions. We realize that student achievement requires extra attention from all of us, parents as partners, stakeholders, board members, teachers, educating just don't stop when the bell rings. And I solicit before, and I'm going to solicit again because summer is coming up, if there are any person who would like to tutor and help, help move in the right direction, please feel free to reach out, because we can never have too many tutors. We're in this thing together. Thank you. Keep sweet and enjoy.
Thank you. Well, remember story.
Well said, Mr. Riddick. I want to speak about, I want to speak in appreciation of Kings Fork High School Bulldogs coming and speaking on behalf of Ms. Alki Boone. I also taught under Ms. Boone, and I have seen her get passed over time and time and time again for becoming a principal and being promoted. I don't know what's going on, but, you know, I know there's a time she just gave up, and she definitely has all the characteristics and qualities you would want, and she's been passed over multiple times to become principal at Kings Fork High School, and I don't understand why, but I find it very regrettable because I think she'd make a great, great principal. She's guided Kings Fork through a lot. She's, she has certainly given her time and energy, but there's just something there that is beyond my comprehension of why she continues to be overlooked, and it's not in my ballpark that I can do anything about that, but I, I'm sad that she's leaving her Bulldogs. I know she has her heart and soul at Kings Fork High School, and I think this, I'm sad, I'm sad to see that this kind of thing happened to her, what I assume is getting close to the end of her career, and it's too bad. I think it makes for a very, leaves a very, very sad faculty behind. I know she will try to do her very best where she's placed, but again, I truly don't understand how or why she has been passed up multiple times, and that's just not right. So that being said, I wanted to, I just wanted to tell you, Alki Boone, I really appreciated your support many times when I was there as well. Another thing is I want to address the Sperry family. I've gone through some of this with you. I don't think that you have been treated fairly or appropriately. I am really glad that you pointed out the many inconsistencies, and I'm very sorry that this has happened. I wish it hadn't. I wish our board, our district, was more open and transparent with these things. I'm, I'm very, very sorry. You don't need that on top of your loss, and I was glad to be made aware of the multiple things that don't make sense, and I hope someone who is, that it is in their ballpark will make this right. You deserve that, and so I'm very sorry. I want to say to Ms. Snodgrass that although our chairs said that it is true that all the money that has been spent is listed, but money that has been spent is listed, but that's the very thing, it's already been spent. And so, the transparency for the contracts, that's prior to being spent, and it doesn't do any good to see it after it's been spent. That's not what your concern was. It's not what my concern was when I voted against it. Again, the lack of transparency or more accountability, you can say that, that all the money that's being spent is listed there, but that's the very part that it's already spent. It's already a done deal. So, it leaves more and more that we don't have an oversight of money being spent in the big deal. We don't have oversight of the money spent at the smaller, at the localities of schools. You just got to know that this board has very little oversight over anything, and now tonight, we even have less than what we had before. So, that's just how it's run here in Suffolk. So be it. Everyone have a good evening.
Board Member Howell.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, for those of you that attended in person, those of you that are watching online. I hope the recurring message that you're hearing over the past few months is that every single one of us is invested at some level, and every single one of us needs to participate at whatever level is appropriate, whether you have children in the school, you're employed by the school, you're on the board, or you just live in Suffolk and you pay taxes, that we then receive some of those funds for our school. We have so much potential in this city, and we are tapping into that, but there's so much more that we can be doing. We're just not going to do it finger pointing, retreating, folding our arms, going to our corners. It's difficult to sit up here, more difficult than I anticipated in my naivety. And what I can say is that I genuinely want to sit up here and see Suffolk Public Schools succeed, for the children who are so infinitely valuable that they deserve that, and for us folks, because those children are then going to lead the way when we pass the baton and we get a much-needed rest. And they cannot have everything that they deserve if we aren't working together. It's really hard to do that in this climate. It really is. And I'm sure we all understand that, we've experienced it. But I am committed, whether I have interests in common with the other folks up here, with the teachers in our district or not, I'm going to grind through this. I'm going to pray and weigh what is right, what is best for the kids, with student achievement and school safety at the forefront of my mind and heart. And sometimes the folks in my borough agree with things that are going on up here, oftentimes lately not, but my job is to filter through the information, the things that you have to read between lines and research and understand to make these weighty decisions. I say all that. It's frustrating to be a former teacher and see so many colleagues overwhelmed, exhausted, and discouraged, and there's no one finger to point, no one person to blame. There's so much here in Suffolk at our fingertips where we can be amazing, but we have to sometimes set ourselves aside, our desires, our pride, our issues and agendas, and just really get to the heart of what these children need. And in this day and age, these kids need our very best. They need our example of humility, and grace, and truth, and courage, and kindness, and hard work, at whatever cost to our own interests, our own family time. That's just my little piece, when I sit back and I listen to all the things that go on in some of these meetings, and I am, I'm on this team, and I'm in it too now. Now, getting off my soapbox, and I want to also take this time to congratulate all the LAP participants that were here earlier. I didn't take that moment to say congratulations to all of you, but well done. Congratulations to you for being willing to bite off a bigger chunk than just what is usually your little corner of the world, your classroom. Congratulations for the athletic wins. I also want to call attention, though, to our Nansman River baseball team, who, they're playing in the state championship tomorrow. And, pardon? Oh, okay. Baseball's my favorite, so I am a little biased there, and I'm a warrior, but I wanted to throw that out there. I know we don't have a slide for it yet, because we haven't won yet, but I'm assuming we'll see that in July. And congratulations to all the teachers who were spotlighted this evening. Kings Fork, Ms. Boon's value is evident, and I pray that this showing right here is what carries her through whatever transition that she's going to face. And she knows whether she's at Kings Fork, or she's at Lakeland, or when retirement comes, she is well-loved, and she has done an excellent job. That is evident in your comments, in your emotions that are on display. And I pray that that touches her heart as it has touched mine. Someone made the comment, and I've already forgotten who, accountability and feedback need to be consistently exhibited in all of our administrators. Well, that plays a little bit off of those who spoke on behalf of Kings Fork. Accountability and feedback are crucial, and we shouldn't have to pick and choose which administrator exhibits it and which school gets that administrator. We need to come to the point where that's on display in everyone. And again, that's a team effort. That's up to us and how we guide the superintendent and our policies, and that's up to him and how he hires and shuffles, because that's just life, folks, in education, there's always shuffling. And I do understand your point, but we should have to, we should not have to pick and choose who is accountable enough, who gives the best feedback, who's strong enough. We should someday get to the standard where everyone is, and all of our schools can benefit. Thank you, Ebony, for your always encouraging words. I appreciate that you bring a little bit of light and love and gratitude into these meetings, and I echo your sentiments, and especially that scripture. I don't want to ignore the things that are going wrong, the things we are not doing well, because then we don't make any progress. We've got to find balance. We've got to find balance in our critique and in our praise. And we have to find balance between the image we want to project and really what's behind that image, the meat, what's inside the building and what these kids are achieving, and if they're safe, and if their teachers feel supported and they want to stay. Balance seems to be, for me, our greatest mission at this point, and it's probably going to be an ongoing goal for, for me and for Suffolk Public Schools. I think that that's all I have for this evening. I just want to encourage you to continue to show up, to continue to talk to us. We can talk and disagree without being hateful and ugly, and we need to learn to accept criticism and be real with each other. So thank you for your time tonight. Have a good evening and have a good weekend.
Thank you. Board Member Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. I too want to thank everyone for coming out and speaking. That's how we grow with each other, when you share your concerns, and believe me, we hear them. I want to congratulate everyone that we went to several ceremonies for the honor graduates, and to see them go up there and receive their scholarships this week, it was amazing. Last night at Nansman River, a young gentleman, one of our students, received over $200,000 for a West Point scholarship, and that, that was amazing. It felt like he was one of our personal children. We were so, so excited for him. And we're just excited about our students as a whole. And I want to encourage our staff, I don't know if there's some way we can do this, because I work in another school district, and the kids know that school is ending next week, and all of the kids are not excited about it. They're crying, because they don't want to be home the whole summer. They'd rather be at school with their friends or the teachers. And so, if there's some way we could, I don't know, send a letter to them at home, all kids love letters and mail, to, to interact with them even during the summer, to let them know that we're still thinking about them. Because a lot of kids, I'm in elementary, they get a lot of love from their teachers, their counselors, bus drivers, the custodians, the cafeteria workers, they love coming to school. So it sends me when I see kids really crying, because they don't want school to end, because, you know, it's a happy thing that they love school, but it's sad that they're, they're sad about it going home, because most kids, you would think they were running out the door, because they don't want to be in school. But that's not the case in all, all cases with kids. I want to congratulate in advance all of our seniors that will be graduating and walking across the stage on Saturday. We look forward, that's one of the highlights of our year, is, you know, witnessing the hard work that they've done over the 12 years, and they're walking across the stage. Thank you, staff, the SPS family. Again, we can't be great without you. All of you bring a special expertise to our school system, and we appreciate it. We appreciate that you are even taking other steps to gain more knowledge and more education, and look forward to new principals, assistant principals, and moving up. I think whatever probably you need, Dr. Gordon seems to have a lot of contacts and ways to get more education for our staff, and thank you, we appreciate you, I know I do, for the things that you do, Dr. Gordon. Again, we don't, none of us get everything right, but we try. And when we hear that we are falling short, let's come together, dialogue, and see how we can get things on, on a better level. I appreciate everyone. Have a great summer. God bless.
Thank you. Faith to your bow.
Amen.
Oh, I'm sorry. Board Member Mayo, please forgive me.
That's okay, Madam Chair. Good evening to all, and thanks to all who came out to be with us this evening. This certainly is a special time of the year in the life of Suffolk Public Schools. The end of the school year is a time for celebration, graduation ceremonies, award programs, athletic accomplishments, and other end-of-the-year activities. Congratulations to the class of 2022, and I look forward to the graduation ceremonies on Saturday, which is the culminating event for our seniors for a job well done. I had the opportunity to be a part of the celebration during Senior Awards Night at Lakeland High School this past Monday, June 6. Scholarships were presented to students from private and nonprofit organizations, as well as from various colleges and universities. Many students were recognized for receiving scholarships in some, in six figures. It was mentioned that scholarships are still being awarded, and that the amount will continue to grow for these seniors. In addition, I attended the White Coat Ceremony on May 26 at Lakeland for students in the Project Lead the Way biomedical program. There were 10 students who received their white coats. It is interesting to note that all of these students plan to further their education in pursuit of careers in the health or medical fields. These students are to be commended for their hard work and for achieving excellence during their high school years. Also, I attended another event, the CCAP Completors Award Ceremony, and that was on June the 2nd. And I wanted to share these accomplishments with you. I asked Mrs. Connie Burgess, who is the principal at CCAP, to give me this information, because she mentioned it during her remarks to all who were in attendance. The students' accomplishments included 16 CTE programs with 197 program completers, 16-plus credential opportunities with 180 certifications obtained by completers, three dual enrollment courses with 50 students attaining 336 hours of dual credit, four Skills USA Leadership and Skills Championship State winners, that was second, fourth, fifth, and sixth place in the utility-heavy construction contest, seven Hampton Roads Public Works Academy cadets, seven First Governors Career and Technical Academy Cadet completers, 29 newly-inducted National Technical Honor Society members, and 16-plus high-demand, high-wage career pathways. This is evidence that our CTAE programs are career-oriented, and that our students are benefiting in a wonderful way, and we want to congratulate all of those students for their achievements. Special thanks are extended to our loyal employees who are retiring and for their dedication through the years. Your commitment to Suffolk Public Schools and to our students will always be treasured and remembered. And as always, thank you to Dr. Gordon, the school administrative staff, school administrators, teachers, and all support staff and members of the Suffolk Public Schools family for your commitment to the education of our students. Everyone's contribution to SPS is valued and appreciated. Together, everyone achieves more. I believe in the education of our children, and that we must continue to provide meaningful educational programs and opportunities for them to learn and grow. We must prepare them for lifelong learning and to be productive members of society. Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to bring comments this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Mayo. Now.
Faith to your bow.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So much has been said this evening, ditto, 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 to Ms. Jenkins and Ms. Mayo. I congratulate all of our students that are graduating on Saturday. I think we mentioned this evening that we already have 13 million, over $13 million in scholarships. That's tremendous, and it's growing. There are going to be more. I want to thank all of our employees, as usual, for their dedication and devotion. This has been a trying experience for everyone in Suffolk Public Schools, but I think, I'm an optimist, and I believe from every bad experience comes some good things. And I think we will learn, we will look back on this in years to come and say, oh, we learned so much during COVID and post-COVID, and I think that will help us grow even more. Earlier, we had a work session from our superintendent where he gave us his vision for 2022-23 school year, and I applaud him for his vision. Many of those things are my vision, thank goodness, and he has included them. And I know that he is going to work diligently with his staff and with all our employees to make sure that we achieve that vision, and I applaud him for that. And I know our students will benefit from all of these things as we move forward. I want to personally thank Mr. Jackson for his comments this evening. They came from the heart. You have students in our school, you see what we're doing, I think you appreciate what we're doing. I too believe in teaching tolerance. I taught that when I was a teacher, and I think that is the answer. We cannot eliminate things because we just don't want to admit that they're there. We have to expose our children to things so that they can make decisions for themselves and teach them tolerance, and they will learn that. And I thank you, Ms. Wright, for your comments, and we all are a work in progress, and we need to remember that. And under God's grace, we will get to the point where we will reach our reward. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I want to say ditto to all of the board members for their very positive comments, those who made positive comments about the work that's been done this year since it's the end of the year. I want to say those things, and I'm going to say some, some other things as well. First of all, when people come. First of all, when people come to the school board, this year has been an interesting year for all of us. As a matter of fact, the last few years have been interesting years for us. But I'm going to say this, no matter how many times you tell a lie, it won't become the truth. We have, our staff has been through some traumatic events, the insults with the, you misspent the money or you misspent whatever or whatever. And when I heard Ms. Wright read the scripture she read and when I heard people comment on the scriptures, the truth is that for me, as a believer, as a Christian believer, the truth is that God has a way of showing things. And it's always interesting. The perfect, the perfect audit that we had seemed to just fall in line with the way that He works. There are some things that just work out even when people just tell a lie. I don't care how many times you make up a falsehood, it just, it just works. He is the way of working, I believe. That's just my belief. I'm not putting that on anyone else who doesn't want to, doesn't share my beliefs. But I believe that. I once said at the close of a school board meeting when people were doing their little thing and coming up and saying ugly things and calling names and doing what they do, that my life, God walks on water and He really does. I went to court for the fourth time since 2020. And the judge lets them people know that what they had said wasn't true and they kept right on saying it. And the reason that I'm bringing that up is because it needs to stop. Bullying, cyberbullying, needs to quit. The Facebook page for the Suffolkians for Accountability, it needs to quit. There are lies on there that need to come down. Cyberbullying for grown folks is worse than cyberbullying for students. So if these are people who are supposed to be, supposed to be, adults who are lying and want to be recognized, they need to stop because they are very bad examples for children. One of them was back there this evening. She's gone. Because when it comes time to tell the truth, they seem to disappear, dissipate. But the truth is, they need to stop. There are people walking in different boroughs that need to stop doing the things that they're doing because even when the truth comes out, they continue with the foolishness. But it needs to stop because the truth is that when things are, when you can't win a free and fair election with whatever your platform is, you don't need to bring it into our schools and cause dissension. You need to just stop doing what you're doing and come up with some ideas that people may really believe in. So I appreciate the parent who came forward. Thank you. I appreciate the parent who came forward because the truth is, we have policies in place. If parents don't agree with the books that we read or the books that we choose, there's a policy that you go through. If people don't believe in other kinds of things that we do, there are steps that have been put in place for you to voice your opinion and you need to follow those steps. Just obey the rules and things will work out. When you try to divert or move away from the rules, there's always chaos. And I've come to the conclusion that there are people who enjoy chaos. That's the only satisfying thing in their life. They have no suggestions for what to do better. They just like chaos. It somehow satisfies some type of urge in them. Now, that's all that I'm going to say about them because they've taken up too much space in our time. I want to say some good stuff, and these good things are here. We have students who have earned, as the board members have mentioned, over $13 million in scholarships. This is an example of the work that you guys have done. It doesn't just happen magically. It's a culmination of the efforts of the wonderful staff that we have, the great parents we have, and the academic potential in these wonderful kids that we have the opportunity to work with. We have some great students, some great parents, and some outstanding teachers and administrators. I want to say to those of you who support Ms. Boone, one of the sad things about being a military wife is when you have to move, if you're a working military wife, is when you have to move and you have to leave a job. I've cried over jobs because I had to move and I had to get another job. Leaving a place that you love, that you do well, is hard. I responded to a couple of emails because I know how hard it is. From what you said, from what people wrote, Ms. Boone has done an outstanding job where she is. I'm hoping that wherever she goes, that will continue. I believe it will. I know that it's hard for anybody to move because it was surely hard for me to move. I think I've had 22, 23, four jobs in various places all over. And it bothers you when you move yourself. It bothers you when you leave your friends. It bothers you when you leave your support system and you have to go. But to go and to share those skills is one part of growth and it's a good thing. It doesn't feel like it's good when you have to do it, but it's a good thing. And if it helps where you are, it's a good thing. It might not sound good now, it might not feel good. It probably feels really bad at this point. But my hope is that it turns out to be a good thing. At any rate, we can use those skills. If, if she's half as good as what you've described, we surely can use her in a lot of places. Our art teachers at, at Nansman River High School need to be commended because I went to the Congressional Art Contest. Our art teacher who had at least worked with students, who had at least five entries at the Congressional Art Contest. For someone to do that work and have those students present is difficult, but I'm proud of him and those students who presented there and who were recognized for their work. Our pathways to engineering program had students recognized. But I want to say something special. When I hear people come before us and tell us that the students can't read, they're not prepared, and all the other fibs that they tell, because like I said, a lie is a lie. I don't care how many times you tell it. They came back, students who graduated in 2018. So when I witnessed them going across the stage and the board members congratulated them and all of that, they came back to see their teacher. And I got a chance to see some of their projects. Anyway, two of them are going to work. I got a chance to talk to them. Two of them are engineers now. They graduated from A&amp;T State University and I struck up a conversation with them. One is going to work at Procter &amp; Gamble. The other one is going to Redmond Washington to work with one of the, one of the, uh, Bill Gates companies to be an engineer out there. That's what we're doing. That's the investment that you're making now and our results are showing. There was another one there with him. I didn't get a chance to talk to him, but he graduated from the University of Virginia. And he's in the STEM field too. So the work that we've done is really speaking for us. So I got a chance to talk to those students as well. I want to say, thinking about our two programs, our pathways programs, our biomedical program being recognized for five years in a row for national recognition, that's something special. It speaks to what we're doing in this school system. Now, telling people about, it doesn't mean that I'm on some kind of positive cloud and I don't know that we have problems. We, of course, do have problems. I shared with Mr. and Mrs. Speary how I felt when their daughter passed away. Because having lost a child, I know a feeling. I can't say, I know your feeling, but I know my feeling when it happened to me. That's something that never goes away. Never, ever. But I can say this to you, that those hard times and those good times that we are experiencing are things that happen in life. Now, if we dwell, if we only dwell on the bad things, it creates a different atmosphere. So we try to emphasize the positive things that are going on in the school system from up here because we know we have to deal with the other things as well. It doesn't mean we're not trying to improve the other things. It doesn't mean that we're looking over the other things or glossing over them. We're constantly trying to work on better things for all students. But we do want to say that we're proud. We're encouraging people to move forward. We're lauding people for the wonderful things that they do. And so we wish you the best summer that you could possibly have, but we're encouraging you for the good job that you do. At the end of the year, graduation speaks to what we've done in this school district. And we wish to congratulate you for all that you do because we are a team. And it takes everybody, from the custodian and bus driver, security people, and all of our parents, grandparents, aunts, uncles, and everybody who puts a child on the bus, who says something encouraging, who does something to help a child get to school. We appreciate you. So thank you for what you've done and what you continue to do. Now, school board members, the rest of the items on our agenda are information items, unless there are questions about them. Are there? I will take this as a time then to entertain a motion for adjournment. Is there a... All right. Madam Chair, a move that we adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn. Are there questions or comments? Madam Clerk.
Board members, please vote. Board Member Howell?
Yes.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Excuse me, Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick? Board Member Story? Vice Chair Byram?
Yes.
Board Chair Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Good night, all. Have a wonderful summer.